We see that we have a lot of community. My name is Melinda Katz, I'm the VP. We see that we have a lot of community people also here for certain projects. So what we're going to try to do is put the community, the ones that most of the community is here to testify about, early on, so many of you can get back to work and do what you need to do. And we're going to ask, just so you know, if you're from 1 to 122, we're just going to put you after, alright? So just so everybody knows the timing of today. I'd like the people that are here from the communities to be able to get back to their jobs, okay?
I can slide out for you. Let me slide out. Wait, are your legs with arms? Your legs are tight leading all the way.
We do have a modification to the order of the calendar, not a modification of the calendar, but to the order, and Lisa is going to go through that.
Calendar items will begin with calendar number, items number 23 to 27.
Good morning. Thank you for having us here today. There we go, better. Thank you Borough President Katz, as well as the members of your team. I'm Dan Maritz, this is Alex Arker, Simon Bakas, we're the owners of the Arker Companies, this is Jackie Scorinchi from Ackerman. Today, we're here to discuss the vision for the former Peninsula Hospital site, which, after asking for community suggestions, we are now going to be calling Edgemere Commons. Our goal is to create a groundbreaking development in Edgemere, one that will help to both revitalize and transform the area into a vibrant live-work-play neighborhood. Just to quickly introduce the team. Our lead architect is Alf Gang Architects. Ackerman is here representing us as land use council. Langen Engineering is our civil, resiliency, and infrastructure engineer, and Sam Schwartz Engineering is handling the environmental review for the project. And again, I'm Dan Maritz, one of the principals of the Arker Companies. We're a fully integrated, third-generation family real estate company who's been building in New York for over 50 years. We've developed over 8,000 units of housing and approximately a million square feet of commercial and community facility space throughout New York, including many developments in Queens, from Jamaica to Richmond Hill to the Rockaways. Our family commitment is to build and preserve high-quality and thoughtfully designed mixed-income and mixed-use communities. And most recently, we celebrated the opening of our Beach Channel senior residences in the Rockaways, along with the Borough President, to welcome over 200 new seniors into brand-new, beautiful, affordable housing. That brings us to the reason we're here today, to discuss the revitalization of Edgemere, a neighborhood that for years has suffered the blight of chronic disinvestment, whose residents have long suffered without many of the basic conveniences that we take for granted. Edgemere is a food-tail desert. Its primary thoroughfare of Beach Channel Drive has no commercial or economic activity for 10 entire blocks, from Beach 49th Street to Beach 59th Street. There's nowhere to shop, nowhere to eat. Every dollar spent by residents of Edgemere is leaving the neighborhood. Everyone you talk to says something has to change, and change big. We've spent the past three years, since purchasing the site, working with numerous stakeholders, from large meetings to small, listening to opinions. Those voices, especially from the east end of the Rockaways, including Edgemere, have helped shape the plan. Edgemere Commons is at its heart an economic development project, a mixed-use, mixed-income community featuring housing across wide income bands, commercial space, community facility space, and open space, designed with resiliency and energy efficiency in mind, and focused on local job creation. These are several of the core community benefits that form the foundation of Edgemere Commons. I'd like to hone in on each of the community benefits, starting with the ground floor plan. The goal of Edgemere Commons is to create an exciting live-work-play environment, and to do so requires thoughtful site planning and creative integration of both non-residential uses and housing throughout the site. In a neighborhood that currently has no commercial activity, our goal is to flip the script, including a diverse blend of retail spaces, starting with a 20,000-square-foot, full-service Western Beef supermarket in Phase 1. For the balance of the 72,000 square feet of retail space, we'll be looking to curate a unique blend of regional retail and homegrown entrepreneurs. We're working with the Rockaway Business Alliance and the Queens Economic Development Corp., as well as local restaurateurs, to launch a food incubator and food hall concept, and plan to bring local restaurants to the development. Residents in the neighborhood deserve a place to walk for jobs, shopping, dining, and daily conveniences, and we will be that destination. In addition to the retail, our project is allowed to incorporate up to 77,000 square feet of community facility space. As part of our neighborhood outreach, we've heard the need from local stakeholders for various community facility uses, including medical, cultural, educational, and off-of-place for local nonprofits. We've had and are continuing to have conversations with hospital networks and private health centers about occupying part of our community facility space, and we understand the need for space for the youth of Rockaway, and are working on the inclusion of a community center within the project. Like many of the public benefits within the project, retail and community facility will be interspersed throughout the development in a thoughtful manner. Thinking about urban planning strategy for the site, the incorporation of thoughtful and purposeful open spaces integral to the development. There will be pockets of open space throughout the site with the most prominent, a large public plaza. The public plaza is designed to include both passive and active recreation opportunities, featuring a children's playground space as well as social environments for seating. It is uniquely designed so there are ground floor spaces adjacent to both sides of the public plaza, allowing users an opportunity for creative indoor-outdoor experiences. It's our hope that this space can be the home of future events, including farmers' markets and food festivals, which would benefit the surrounding neighborhood, as well as a safe and well-lit environment for kids to throw around a football. As previously mentioned, our family focuses on the development of mixed-income and mixed-use developments. We work within the framework of the city's affordable housing programs, which are designed to serve a wide range of incomes, in this case between 30% and 130% of AMI, and providing enough flexibility to fulfill demands from families ranging from below $30,000 to about $150,000. We've heard across the board of the brain drain from the Rockaways, of millennials that may have grown up in the Rockaways who want to return but have trouble finding an affordable apartment to rent. This next generation of leaders and entrepreneurs need affordable places to return to, and most certainly will qualify to live at Edgemere Commons. And these young leaders of the Rockaways showed remarkable passion in supporting the project at the community board hearing. Edgemere Commons is being developed with resiliency and storm preparedness at the forefront. We are one of the few developers who have completed new mixed-use properties in the flood zone after Sandy, both in the Rockaways and on the Staten Island line, and have experience constructing above and beyond the FEMA requirements. The project will include innovative measures, including bio swales, a bioretention rain-water system, and solar panels, and we've carefully balanced the need for ADA-accessible sidewalks with a gentle slope that brings the buildings fronting High Point Plaza above the flood elevation. And all buildings will feature standby emergency generators, critical in the event of power outages. Our experience working with our civil engineers at Langen, as well as local leaders like Dr. Williams from Reddy Rockaway, have helped to shape the resiliency plan and will make Edgemere Commons sustainable for the long term. Last, but most certainly not least, is the long-term economic effect that Edgemere Commons will have on the surrounding community, and the local jobs that it will create. We estimate over a 10-year period that we will average 300 to 350 construction jobs on an annual basis, and add approximately 600 to 650 permanent jobs to the development once completed. And we're proud to announce we made an agreement with 32BJ for residential building maintenance. At the Arker Companies, we pride ourselves on local hiring. We have demonstrated success doing so in the Rockaways on our senior project, and are currently doing the same on a large project in East New York. We expect to work with the elected officials, community board, and local community-based organizations to ensure that new hiring opportunities go to members of the community. We're beginning to collect resumes for Edgemere Commons, so that when we are ready to start construction, we'll have a list of interested candidates. The email address is jobs@comingtoedgemere2020.com. As discussed, we're hoping to create an opportunity for local entrepreneurs to both start and expand their businesses here, creating opportunities for local business ownership and business incubation to help Rockaway's next generation of professionals achieve success. Affordable housing and permanent job opportunities are the keys to making the youth of Rockaway the next success story. I'd like to conclude by discussing our community engagement. It's been an amazing experience spending time with valuable members of the Rockaways. The list above shows a number of local community organizations, as well as local entrepreneurs that we've been meeting with, in addition to hosting large and small events over the past few years. We know that Community Board 14 may have voted against our project last month, but that night, the community itself voted for us. The picture on the slide shows the tally of the speakers who spoke for well over an hour at the community board hearing. Over 75% of the speakers were passionately supportive of the project. The community wants this project. The residents of Edgemere are fed up with the lack of amenities in their neighborhood and want the jobs, restaurants, shops, and housing. Our family is dedicated to this project being a success, and that means building up the local community. We cannot succeed if they don't, and the residents who actually live in this part of the Peninsula have made their voice loud and clear that it's time to move forward with Edgemere Commons. I'm going to turn now to Jackie Scorinchi from Ackerman to review the technical aspects of the ULEP application, and I'm happy to review in detail any of the community board's recommendations specifically during the Q&amp;A.
So we are seeking a series of land use actions to facilitate the development, which include a city map change, zoning map change, zoning tax amendments, and large-scale general development special permits. The first action, city map change, is to reestablish the small portion of Beach 52nd Street that was demapped in 2003, so that there is a new connection from Beach Channel Drive all the way down to Rockaway Freeway. Currently, the only access is at Beach 47th Street or Beach 56th Street, so this will improve circulation throughout the area. The second action is to change the zoning, which has not been changed since 1961. The existing zoning is R5, R5C12, and C81, south of Rockaway Beach Boulevard, to a C44 and C43A. We're asking for two tax amendments, first to map the area as mandatory inclusionary housing area with option 1, so that 25% will be permanently affordable while all of the units will be restricted by regulatory agreement as affordable and moderate income levels. And the second tax amendment is to permit a physical-cultural establishment as a right to permit flexibility for future retail tenants at the site. The large-scale general development special permits that we're asking, this is different than a typical rezoning, will be subject to a large-scale plan, so any changes to the buildings or the site plan will require us to either come back through a full ULEP, or at least for a minor modification, that would be referred to the community board. Here, we're asking for waivers to height and yard requirements. And also, sorry, also, we're asking for modification to the signage requirements here because we have a supermarket tenant, and it's, we're restricted to a 500-square-foot sign, which typically supermarket has approximately 1,000 square feet for signage. And finally, just to summarize.
So again, to summarize, you know, again, this is a project that's going to be built in 11 buildings over 10 to 15 years, eventually totaling 2,200 units. We expect the first phase to break ground in 2020 at some point, and would include two buildings, approximately 400 units, but would also include market, and, you know, another approximately 20,000 feet of retail space in those buildings. I think we went through all the benefits, so I'll open it up to the Borough President for any comments.
Okay, so, no, no, there's no questions from the board. Hi.
Hi.
So I know you've done a lot to get to this point right now, so let me just ask some specific questions if I can. So, just for the record, and just so everything's in one place, how many units? 2,200, right?
2,200.
How many of them are affordable?
They're all subject to a regulatory agreement, so affordable at some AMI.
And what's, we will not have that. And what is the difference between the community board presentation as far as affordable housing goes and this presentation? Because I know you did some sort of amendment.
We haven't amended the affordable housing component since here.
So go through that again for me, just in detail.
Yeah, give me the...
No, just say it. I mean, I got...
I just wanted to put up the pie chart, so. So it's going to be a mix of incomes between 30% and 130% of average median income. The chart gives a range, and it's going to be subject to HPD's programs. So we'll be using a mix of what's called the Ella program. They have an 80% Ella program where 20% is above, and then mix and match. So we expect the first four buildings to be Ella, the next, the next four to be Ella plus, and then E1 and E2 to be mix and match.
And so the first phase of 400 units?
Correct.
Is going to be what?
Ella.
And that means to everybody...
That means to everybody a range between 30% and 80%, with an average of 60.
Average of 60.
Correct.
And as you build it, 50% will be under the same rules, right? Lottery, 50% goes to the community.
Correct. So those buildings will be, Ella buildings are subject to the HPD affordable housing lottery, which will give 50% preference to the community board.
Alright. And what retail is going in the first phase?
So, it's two buildings. One building has the 20,000-square-foot supermarket. The other building has about a 12,000-square-foot, we'll call it a junior anchor along Beach Channel Drive, and then it has some smaller neighborhood retail along Beach 52nd Street, and that's going to be the beginning of the walkable corridor along Beach 52nd that we're creating.
And the food store, I saw Western Beef, is that what that is?
Correct. That's the supermarket. That, we're expecting.
Western Beef.
Correct.
And that's going to be the whole 20,000 square feet?
Correct.
And the other 12,000, you'll have local stores, local artists, what are you doing with that?
So, we anticipate the 12,000-square-foot space to be along Beach Channel Drive and be our best opportunity to create like a regional retail location. We're creating Beach 52nd Street, which is going to run completely from Beach Channel Drive all the way down to the freeway, and that's going to be lined along the way with smaller storefronts, that'll be more feasible for local entrepreneurs.
And the second phase would start when?
So, we would anticipate, you know, again, it's all subject to financing from HPD, so they would have to sign off on it, but we would expect the second phase in maybe 18 months or so to start, after the first.
You have questions?
Yeah. Do you think the opening of Beach 52nd Street?
Sure. I think I have a site plan in the appendix. So here's the site plan. And right now, essentially, it's just one giant super block, and so, as part of our design and our planning, in consultation with Department of City Planning, what we desired to do is create more of a neighborhood street grid. So we're introducing two new streets to the project. One is, you know, you can see going north to south, a street from Beach Channel Drive all the way down to Rockaway Freeway, that's going to be the new Beach 52nd Street, and that's the street that's going to be a walkable corridor essentially lined with local retail. And that goes south of Rockaway Beach Boulevard as well, because we separately bought what's labeled as F1, it's a small parcel across the street, and working with DOT and with city planning, that's one of our actions, which is to actually connect Beach 52nd Street to the freeway, because right now it just dead-ends there. The other street is called Peninsula Way, and that's going to bisect it from east to west.
And the private roadway within your site plan, that will be open to pedestrian traffic as well as vehicular traffic?
Correct. So it'll be a privately-owned public street. So it means we'll own it, we'll maintain it, but it's open to the public for traffic, for pedestrians, et cetera.
And will you be required to close those streets down at least once a year, to maintain the private status?
If that's a regulation, yes.
Please move to the podium. Thank you.
Sure. So, yeah, it will be, we actually will be memorializing this as part of our restrictive declaration for the project, as a...
And that restrictive act will be with city planning or with...
With city planning, yes.
And about your open space, can you just give us more detail about the larger open space and the other open spaces in the project?
So, the main open space is what's shown as the public plaza. I'll go to the drawing shortly, but there's also what we're calling High Point Plaza, it's being called High Point Plaza because the way the project was designed in consideration of the civil engineering of the site, is the grade of the street essentially very gradually increases until you get to High Point Plaza, so that all of the entrances to the buildings along High Point Plaza are actually out of the flood zone. It's very gradual, the streets are very long, so it conforms with all ADA requirements. And the idea of High Point Plaza is that it's a place with four corners with active retail, I think that's a little, yeah. So this is the idea for High Point Plaza, where you have corners with cafes or retail, and it's an opportunity to, you know, be a town center. The public plaza is going to be between the D and the E blocks, and it was designed, in consultation with city planning, they wanted it to be an active area that was like similar to like a play street, as well as having both active kind of recreation, like a children's playground area, as well as kind of attractive places where, you know, people could sit. So, you know, for example, those, you know, bio swales are actually also benches, so it has, you know, a dual purpose of being places for people to sit, as well as providing resiliency measures.
And my final question, could you just give us a little bit more detail on your rebuilding, how you filled that in the plan?
I'm going to call Chuck for that. Chuck, do you like the two-minute version?
Do you have the slide that shows the overlay? Yep, okay. Chuck Harper with Langen Engineering. So we are beholden to the existing mapped street grid around the perimeter of the site, which is at roughly elevation 6. So buildings fronting that area will be dry and/or wet floodproofed. Wet floodproofed site locations will be the areas allowed by code, which is parking, storage, and building entries. The rest will be dry floodproofed. Within the site, as Dan mentioned, we elevate to the center, the white area there are areas that are above the mapped flood elevation, actually, which is 10, and then the design flood is 11, and then the areas in green are elevated above the design flood of 11.
How much retail is in the second, how many other phases are there besides the first?
So it's 11 buildings. We are projecting potentially five phases, but again, it's going to depend on HPD financing as to whether it's five or eight. So the total retail is about 72,000 square feet, so a lot of it's front-loaded in the earlier phases.
And there's no issue with the infrastructure, the property, sewers, water?
No, I mean, again, Chuck can talk to that best. You know, they've taken an early approach to studying the infrastructure here, but I think he can give a better scientific answer than I can.
But there's no work that needs to be done?
The work that needs to be done is actually being done now.
By the city?
By the city. We have what we need in Beach Channel Drive, and the city has already awarded and is doing the work in Rockaway Beach Boulevard now.
So that's part of it, that's...
Correct.
So you guys are sticking around for any questions that might come up, trying to test them?
Whatever you ask.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We're going to start calling people.
Okay. I'll leave the mic here.
Alright. We're going to go one forward, one again, it's backward, alright? So, the first one forward, Michaela Jameson.
You want me to leave this mic on for people? Are they coming here?
Yes, they're coming there.
So you guys can go somewhere else so that people don't have you behind them. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Michaela Jameson.
Michaela?
Yes.
Can you turn the mic on? I think it was turned off. Tom? Or then just speak into the microphone?
Are we now? Good? Got you. Sorry about that. My name is Michaela Jameson. I'm a Rockaway resident, and I'm in support of the project. One of the primary reasons because is the development is necessary towards, it's a great step in a way towards creating an economically resilient community. The peninsula is very segregated from the eastern to the western end, and there's a lot of income disparities as well that translate to the economic development of both communities. And the western end really needs a lot of work in terms of development and a lot of economic jumpstart. And I think the density of this project gives businesses an incentive to come to the community and to start like viewing us as someplace where they can grow and like have customers, essentially. And the fact that Arker has already committed to having a Western Beef present is a huge step for a community that's a federally labeled food desert. So that's another reason why I'm in support of the project. Was that the time?
That was perfect. Oh, I don't know, was that the time? No, no, that was just a random...
Okay, cool, then I'll continue. So I attended the Community Board 14 meeting, that was a month ago that Arker mentioned, where they essentially struck down the project, and I want to say that that's definitely not a reflection of where the community stands. As you guys saw on the slide, there was approximately about 45 people that spoke in favor of the project, and only around 10 against it, but yet the project was still struck down. So the community has already spoken and said that they're in support of this, and this is something that they need, and I think that we should obviously listen to the community.
I appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you very much. Well done. Bridget Kowinski is...
Yes. Bridget. Hi, yes. Hi. You're welcome. Hello. My name is Bridget Kowinski, a Rockaway resident. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
My name is Bridget Klipinski, a Rockaway resident. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Given what we experienced during Superstorm Sandy, it's reckless that we're considering the project as currently proposed by ARCA companies. We've sat in the same room with the Army Corps of Engineers, our borough president, and community leaders, grappling with the significant challenge of protecting the Rockaways from sea level rise, erosion, and future storms. Given those risks and stark realities, it's mind-boggling that we're here contemplating a new residential project of this scale in such a vulnerable area. In numerous reports, the city points to models showing routine sunny day flooding throughout the Rockaways by 2050. This flooding won't be solved simply by bioswales or new storm sewers. It's a result of increased rainfall, a high water table, and rising seas. As protection, the Army Corps has proposed an extended groin field and reinforced berm. These measures will keep sand on our beaches and buffer wave action during violent storms, but they will not remedy the regular street flooding that we are already experiencing and that is projected to get much worse. And while ARCA has outlined resiliency measures for its own property, the surrounding area, immediate and peninsula-wide, is thoroughly unprepared and underserved by infrastructure. This lack of infrastructure, including functional streets, transportation, parking, schools and hospital facilities, was cited again and again at the recent Community Board 14 hearing, at which the board voted overwhelmingly to disapprove this project with conditions. The developer was not able to explain how the project would not further burden these resources, some of which are already stretched to their limits. Considering the lessons learned during Hurricane Sandy and in its aftermath, it's unfathomable that our leaders would greenlight a development situating thousands of new residents in a frontline community without the protection and resources required to ensure their safety or ours. We need leaders who prioritize resident safety and community sustainability. To build projects like this, quote, "business as usual" in our most vulnerable areas ignores what we already know of climate change and its impact to coastal communities. For example, what impact will High Point Plaza have on the surrounding streets in the event of a flood? This absolutely must be considered in any development or zoning changes as the consequences will impact and imperil all current and future residents. We need leaders who recognize this urgency, building only in suitable areas that would not adversely affect the neighboring community. In all that I've learned from my neighbors and our own city leaders throughout this process, it's become more clear that this project and the rezoning it would require does not fit that criteria. Thank you.
Bridget, let me ask you, you're on the community board, right?
I'm not.
You're not?
I'm a member of the Rockaway Beach Civic Association, but I'm speaking today as a Rockaway resident.
Did you guys ever talk about how they should be, or it's just, it's okay if you didn't?
I believe the community board had some thoughts on that, based on the environmental impact study with regard to schools and at what point the development would negatively impact the schools in the area.
They did, yeah. But just, all right, I just wanted to do is a conversation in your circle just as far as how we thought it should be. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. And if you have any ideas, like after you go back to the civic and you talk about it, I'd appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. Sianna Smalley? Sianna, sorry. Thank you. Do my best.
Yeah, so again, my name is Sianna. I am in favor of this project for several reasons. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Is that fine? Okay. So, the Rockaways are extremely segregated. This project will do a lot to help the people in the black and brown area. I think today you see a lot of people here who are for and against, and I think when you look at those people, there's a clear difference in who is for and who is against. The people who live in this community are for this project, as was reflected by the community board meeting. That was not reflected by the community board's vote, but again, that board is not reflective of the people who live in that community or the Rockaways in general. So, I think that when you're approaching a community and a project like this, you really have to look at what the people there want. And the people there want housing. The people there have been historically disenfranchised. They need proper housing. They need enough people in that housing to be able to support businesses, which is not possible with the proposed measures of completely cutting down the amount of units. Also, when you talk about, some people have this idea of raising the AMI levels, that's not going to help the people who need the help most. People deserve housing. Housing is a human right. This idea that because people are not well-off, they don't deserve certain things, is unacceptable. And so, you need to listen to the people who lived there, not the people who are coming from a different community. It is time to take a step back and allow us to uplift our own community, to have upward mobility, which the housing does offer, to have proper commercial retail and space and a park and like just basic human rights. These are the things that we need. So, I believe in this project. I think, again, that the community board's decision does not reflect the feelings of the community as has been said. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alisa O'Shea.
Good morning. My name is Alisa O'Shea. I am here as a concerned Rockaway resident of a school-aged child that goes to school in the Rockaways, and I am also an education activist. I am against this proposal because I do not see any plans for any schools in this neighborhood to accommodate the new residents. If you have approximately 1,500 school-aged children moving into this neighborhood, the two closest public schools, PSIS 105 on Beach 45th, is at 112% capacity, and PS 106 on Beach 35th is at 135% capacity currently. There is a current plan in District 27 called Bronx Plan. This is targeting seven schools in Far Rockaway because they are in an underserved community. So, we already have overcrowded schools without the proper support, some of which is coming. But if you flood these schools with up to 1,500 children, where are they going to learn? The with-action analysis states that when this development is complete, it will leave a deficit of almost 2,000 elementary school seats, and the elementary schools will be operating at 135% of capacity. There is no funding in the current budget or plans to construct a new public school, and NYC has reached its max on charter schools. So, my question to the developers is, of the 77,000 square feet that you're proposing for this project, how much of that is for a school? Where will that school be? How will you fund that school? I didn't see anything in the requested permits for education or for a building for education. And in that neighborhood, there is no proposed site for a new school. So, I would like to invite the developers to present your plans to the Community Education Council in District 27. There are many concerned parents in the Rockaways who are interested in how these new families with school-aged children will be accommodated in that neighborhood. Where will they go to school? With the current overcrowding in this underserved community, there needs to be more analysis of the environmental impact of this proposal and how it affects the current schools and where those new kids will go to school. So, I'd like to invite them to come to CEC 27 and talk to the parents. Thank you so much.
All right. Four, it is Rich Iorio, SEIU 32BJ.
Good morning. My name is Richard Iorio. I've been a member of SEIU 32BJ for over nine years. I'm speaking today in behalf of my union, SEIU 32BJ, to express our support for the proposed project at 360 Beach 53rd Street. We represent over 600 workers who live and work in Far Rockaway and Edgemere, and many of our members clean and maintain residential projects like the one under consideration today. We believe this rezoning is an important example of responsible development and a model for how affordable housing and good permanent jobs can be created together. We're proud to support it. The 2,200 units of affordable housing that are proposed will transform a vacant hospital site into a resource for this community. The east side of Far Rockaway needs new housing and commercial space that will reunite the community. We would be thrilled to see a major investment in housing that will keep this neighborhood inclusive. In addition, we're excited to share that the development team has made a commitment to provide prevailing wage building service jobs once the project is complete. A development of this size will create many new jobs, and the development team's guarantee means that it will be a source of economic opportunity and mobility for local residents over the long term. I know firsthand how making a prevailing wage can change a life. I'm relieved to be able to support my family and keep up the rising costs of the city. I have affordable healthcare I can count on, access to a secure retirement, and additionally, because of my union, I have the access to state-of-the-art training facilities that give me the opportunity to earn certificates to progress my career. Residents of the Rockaways and Edgemere need and deserve opportunities like this. 32BJ partners with ARCA across New York City, and we know them, they're a responsible actor. And we believe the project will be an asset to the Rockaways. New York City has a formal housing crisis, an income inequality crisis. This development is an investment in addressing both, and we urge you to approve this. Thank you.
Against Eugene Fallon?
It's not... I'm a new resident of the Rockaway. I've only lived there about 68 years, following my parents and my grandparents. It's not nice to get up here and call people liars, but that's exactly what the ARCA companies They propose that they are doing this for the poor people, for the black and colored people. That's the way it's been characterized. The fact is, this project would be unlawful under federal law. It would accentuate economic and racial segregation in the area. It would do nothing to relieve it. There has been, have been stores in the area, they've gone out of business because the people who live there don't have the money to patronize them. Now, they came here and they said there are no stores up to Beach 59th Street. There's a Pioneer supermarket on Beach 58th Street, just one example of where they're lying. They say that, they say they contacted all these civic associations. Right after their first presentation, the Bayswater Civic Association invited them to come and speak, and they refused. This project is not just about the quarter-mile radius. They would recklessly endanger people at the west end of Rockaway who need to get to a hospital. As their own analysis shows, transportation past the project would be a major problem. Ambulances would have a hard time getting through. There are only two lanes of traffic in each direction through the Rockaways, one on Beach Channel Drive and one on Edgemere Avenue, Rockaway Beach Boulevard. They say that transportation is not an issue. When the A train leaves Beach 60th Street, there are no seats. Today, after the downtown Far Rockaway project is complete, there will be no seats at Wavecrest. There is no ability to add additional trains on the route because the Cranberry Street Tunnel is running at capacity. Their claim that they're going to provide 50% preference to local residents is clearly not going to happen because there's a federal lawsuit right now, which is, gives every sign that the holding will be that local preferences are unlawful in violation of the Fair Housing Act. The issue of schools has already been mentioned. They talk about open space, but they don't talk about any green space. Their streets and sidewalks are what they call open space. Well, maybe, but the rest of Rockaway has green space.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
So, I assume this report of yours has facts and figures about the transportation and the roadways and...
Yes, and unfortunately, this was done very hurriedly. I will probably enlarge on it by the end of the coming week, if that's okay with you.
All right, so just, yes, please proceed. Just to be clear to everyone here, by law, it's 50% to the community board. I just want to make that clear.
Not federal.
By law, right now, it is 50% to the community board. And I just want to make that, that's just a fact. So, I just, I want to throw that out there. And we'll let your testimony just... John, will I go to Tamara Jacobs? Jacobs, is that how it is? I don't know. No, it's not Bruce. That one, pretty sure. Tamara Jacobs. Ms. Jacobs. Hold the microphone.
Hi, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
My name is Tamara Jacobs. I'm a resident of the Rockaway Peninsula. The Rockaways is racially and economically segregated. The black and brown...
Yeah, speak into the microphone so we hear you loud and clear.
Gotcha. I'm a resident of the Rockaway Peninsula. The Rockaways is a racially and economically segregated community, and the black and brown community is on the eastern end of the Rockaways, has historically been underserved and underfunded and neglected. We do deserve resources and services necessary in order to live comfortably. We do deserve affordable housing that allows for upward mobility. At the recent Community Board 14 meeting, sorry, at the recent Community Board 14 meeting, the community spoke overwhelmingly for the project. We do not agree with the board's decision as the voices of the community directly impacted were not heard. We do believe that the people who are directly impacted should have autonomy over the decisions that are being made within their communities.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And again, to be clear about it, just so everybody knows, 50% is the whole community board, so just everybody's on that same page. But I appreciate your testimony. Thank you for taking the time out today. And John Corey is next.
Thanks for the opportunity to talk.
Or against, against, sorry.
If you have me as against, I'm totally not against the project. As a community board member, we voted no for this project for many reasons. The gentleman from SEIU mentioned about prevailing rate. We want prevailing rate for the workers that are there. We want more, a better, a better opportunity for the people that live in the neighborhood. That's why if anybody stayed to the end of the meeting, we had a great discussion on what we could do to get a better return for giving this additional housing to Archer. They are going to make millions upon millions of dollars, and they're going to be nothing back to the community. They're not giving a community center so far. We haven't seen pictures of it, we haven't seen true details of it. No school, no guarantees of decent wages for workers that are there, no guarantees of people getting maybe tax discounts for being, wanting to rent some of the stores, no major program. So, our objective in saying no is to be able to, to try to make sure that we get a better bargain as a deal. As Mike Tuberty said, who's the land use chair, that we've learned from the past, what happened in downtown Far Rockaway, it's a massive project that I'll remind everybody of, and also the project that 80 acres at Arbor East that's coming down the pike will be about probably 50,000 units of affordable housing. We're all going to be pretty damn scared then, but the most important thing is, Mike said, we say yes to all these projects and we are never again part of the conversation. We're never in this room. So, by saying no, we're able to be in this room. So, CB 14, if you stay to the end of the meetings and listen to all the people, the residents who are on CB 14 that live there, they are part of the project, they're part of the process. If you stay and give us advice and understand the project, you'll learn a lot more, that we're not racist, we're not trying to keep people down economically. We care about the community, the whole community board. What's going on in this project is great for some people. The question is also, how come there's no purchasing of homes? Why aren't they building one of the buildings so the young people who live in the neighborhood can buy the homes? You know, Donovan Richards was just given a great award for being the most, for promoting homeownership, yet nothing on the Rockaway Peninsula. There's no homeownership in Far Rockaway. The Arbor East project, again, no plans for homeownership. As far as infrastructure, no one's building on Arbor East because of infrastructure. That's a big issue. So, the one question I have for Archer again is, I asked at the community board meeting, why are you not seeking funding for M2 to make it a much more diverse project economically? Where you can go very low income and go to much higher income to bring people in that will afford a white tablecloth restaurant, okay? So, when... So when I say white tablecloth, I'm not being racist, as white, I mean white as in a nice dining experience. Why does it always have to be Chili's or something like that? So we want the best for this community from the community board. I'm not speaking on behalf of the community, I'm a community board member. We have to make sure that if you walk into a, I'm just holding on a second, if you walk into a car, Gilliship, you don't pay the sticker price, and that's what these guys want us to do. We want to try to make sure that we get the best bang for the buck, a school, a real community center, bowling, a movie theater, something great. Stay to the end of the meetings and listen to us, please. Thank you.
DeKendrick Dazzle? Is that how you say it?
Hi, I would like to put the Rockaway Advocate on the record. This is a publication that's just speaking about the ARCA redevelopment. Hi, my name is DeKendrick Dazzle, and I am a recent college graduate, and I am a current resident of the Rockaways. I'm definitely in favor of the ARCA development because it will bring job opportunities and also affordable housing to our communities, a place that is disproportionately disadvantaged when it comes to affordable housing resources such as food like that is, I like, sorry, another misstep. Affordable food that is also healthy for the community to eat. It's easy to speak on behalf of the community that you're not directly a part of. Being at the west end of the Rockaways is not the same as being in the areas of downtown Far Rockaway. So as a current graduate, I see a lot of my peers leave the Rockaways because there's not a lot of either affordable housing or job opportunities there for them. Oftentimes, all of the, all of the knowledge that we have is being pushed out because no one wants to stay in Far Rockaway. I think this would be a great time to make change for the Rockaways. Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn Doresto. Just so everybody knows what's going on, there's four more people, the test of this.
Good afternoon, or morning. My name is Glenn Doresto. I am a fourth-generation resident of the Rockaways. My family goes back in the Arbor and community over 100 years. The Rockaways is finally becoming a place where people once again want to live. Do you alert discretionary rezoning of the former peninsula hospital site is one of the most important issues that will be facing our community for years to come and is now before you for a vote? It should be noted, at the public hearing meeting on June 25th, local community board member 14 disapproved the rezoning by a vote of 28 to 5 with recommendations. I encourage you to also vote no on the rezoning, as the current plan being presented is out of character with the community and does not appropriate address the current and future needs of the neighborhood and the immediate surrounding area. Such a large development would result in a much more intensive land use than currently exists and would have a significant adverse impact on many residents who live in close proximity and would also have an indirect negative impact on many of the residents who live nearby, as clearly stated in the environmental impact statement, especially many of the children, as was spoken about earlier regarding schooling. We all embrace change when it is positive, and the development of this site can be a good thing if done properly. However, the current redevelopment plan that is being put forth by the ARCA companies is not responsible, and significant changes are needed to ensure the negative impacts are minimized and the benefits to our community are greater. The important issue is about the future of our Rockaway community. We all deserve better. Currently, the ARCA companies has an asset right to build only 568 units. However, they're applying for a with-action discretionary rezoning, and they're looking to add an additional 1,632 units to the project site compared to the no-action condition. Approval of this ULR process and the current plan would allow them to build a large-scale development with 11 buildings, many as tall as 19 stories, containing a total of 2,200 units on a very small plot of land. This plan is irresponsible over development. Approval of the current development as presented goes against everything the community board 14 voted on just a few weeks ago, and would also go against everything they voted on during a citywide zoning text amendment not long ago. Can I continue?
Yeah, another sentence or two?
Yeah, yeah. This current proposal, the builder is going against everything the community voted against two times. This is our community, and we have to live with the results. And I ask that you vote down the rezoning and recommend significant changes to the current density, lack of balance of incomes, parking, schools, healthcare. It's time for the ARCA companies to listen to the concerns of the community and go back to the drawing board and come back with a better plan that will benefit the residents of the Rockaway community.
So once again, I just ask, because people talk about the size, is there a height that you, and I know you can't talk for the community, and maybe you guys should talk about it again?
The surrounding, the surrounding buildings across the street, Ocean Bay Apartments are nine stories high. Now, we want to go 10 stories above those nine-story buildings?
No, but it's not I'm asking. I'm asking, is there any sense of...
The community board recommended nothing over 12 stories. That was what the community board recommended, and listen, these young ladies here, they spoke, they know what they're talking about. The Rockaways has been an economic and racially segregated community, and this is not going to solve the problem here. You need to bring in a little bit more disposable income. To say there's not affordable housing, there is 1,995, 1,395 units at the Ocean Bay Houses, Arbor View Apartments is 1,093, the Nordak Buildings is 342, Beach 41st Street Houses is 712.
We're aware of that. I was just wondering about the envelope for this project, but thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate your time, and I appreciate these young ladies right here too.
Thank you. No, you cannot, no, you cannot, I'm sorry. Thank you, though. Dennis Graham, I don't know whether you're for or against, this is a hearing, it's not like a town hall, but I appreciate it. Yeah, you could, everybody in the room, by the way, can always submit further comments by writing, and it will go into the record, just so you know, official record.
Good morning. My main concern about the project is...
Can you just say your name for the record?
Dennis Graham, I'm a resident of Far Rockaway. Mostly the assistant professor of nursing at Loy College. We're presently doing a study on emergency medical care in New York City, and so in reviewing that data, the Rockaways is an isolated peninsula. We don't have a cardiac cath unit on the peninsula. The average distance for a Rockaway residents to get to when having a heart attack is Jamaica Hospital is about 12 to 14 miles, depending on where you live on the peninsula. The timeframe, we measure the time, we actually have to find the proper times, and the median time for New York City is 40 minutes, and in the Rockaways it's around 55 minutes. So every 10 minutes, if you don't get to a cardiac cath unit, that's 3.3 deaths every 10 minutes. So I think the planning, all the planning in Rockaway has been great, we need more affordable housing, we need more jobs for people, my friend over there, we need, we need a lot of things. But we haven't had the insight to look at the healthcare structure, and I've been working with the American Heart Association, and we really think that this is a pick, it's called pick, Perkyotaneous Cardiac Dimension Unit, DESI, in the Rockaways, and we need it. Thank you.
Mr. Jacobs, I think it is? Is that Dennis?
Hello, everybody. My name is Bruce Jacobs. I'm not a fancy talker, I'm 9/11 first responder and, you know, a New US Navy veteran, Coalition of the Rockaways, New York State Medical and Religious Freedom. I live in Edgemere, I'm an Edgemere resident. We want development, however, there are things that I do want. From 2,200, we, as a community, we needed to go down to 1,500. We're willing to accept 1,500. 2,200 families is too much, it's too little of a land. We need a trauma center at least, or a hospital. We need another school. We need more stores, not just the Western Beef, there is shopping stop, there is other stores. Now, talking to 32BJ, yes, it's good that they say union, we have two affordable buildings across the street, they hire one guy, and then they say they're using union. You know, that's what they're doing across the street. So like John Corey said, watch and make sure. Now, another thing, I worked for transit for 30 years. There's a lot of people, minority people, they work for transit, two-family incomes, they work above that limit, they don't make, they say that they're not eligible. They have family in Rockaway, they grew up in Rockaway, they would like to move back to Rockaway. Whenever they go to apply for a building, they're not eligible because they say that the, they make too much money. When you have four kids and you have two incomes, each kid costs you more than that, they're entitled to be able to move into these buildings also. 13% is not enough. We're asking, the Coalition of the Rockaways is asking for 30% for people that are making income, because they deserve housing also. It's not my decision, it's not up to Donovan Richards, it's not, it's up to the people of Rockaway. One peninsula, one Rockaway, one Rockaway United. Everybody needs help now. There's people in this room, no matter what color or what kind of person they are, that they make good money, like the man said from 32BJ. If he went for an apartment and his wife is working, they probably say that he's not eligible. We need the income down, we need the density down, and we do want stores, and we want development in our neighborhood, because we are neglected, but we want a neighborhood to bring up the AMI, we don't want to bring down the AMI, we want improvements. We need another school, we need all kinds of stuff. We want stores, we don't need a Western Beef, we need more than a Western Beef. We want, like he said, a restaurant, we want a gym, not run by nonprofits. Every organization he ran up there was a nonprofit. My organization is not a nonprofit, we work for free, we work for the neighborhood that we love. So everybody, we want this development, but we want it with modifications. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we're cutting off the people to put their names into the testimony, just so you know. So we have four more, three more left? Brandon Jeffries, four? And then we're going to call back up the developers.
Good morning, Borough President, and distinguished men and women in attendance.
You can take that off the stand.
I appreciate it. My name is Brandon Jeffries, and I stand in favor of the development on behalf of Queens Law Associates. For the record, I would like to submit letters of support from the Secret and Friends Block Association, Rockaway Youth Task Force, Dread Surfer Bar and Grill, Rockaway Development and Revitalizing Corporation, Jamaica Bay, and the Local East Development of New York for review, that are letters of support.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is a time of change, and in these times, resources must be maximized to be able to actually reflect such change. The change that I'm speaking comes from four components: housing, jobs, resources, and entertainment. On the housing end, this is needed in the Rockaways more than ever if you walk through the actual peninsula. Stabilized rent is a commodity that does not exist in the majority of those areas, and we need not only affordable housing, but we need long-term stabilized rent that can actually go towards people being able to afford homes for their own in the future. I'd also like to discuss the fact that there is no retail in the area, there is very little recreational opportunities, and there are very few problem-solving resources, like Queens Law Associates, like Rock Safe Streets, to provide resources. On our end, we offer free legal, housing, and youth resources. More than ever, we're realizing that housing not only is important, is essential, but additionally, on the food end, there's no restaurant in that area to really encapsulate what the people need. There is no supermarkets. Western Beef will be there, and to be honest, it's a scarce opportunity that does not exist on the peninsula. This is actually going to decrease in terms of what the people are spending out to be able to put back towards a supermarket in their area. We're talking about reinvesting, and we're talking about a mixed income use that can go forward and project the Rockaways instead of keeping us at a standstill. Lastly, more than ever, I just wanted to point out this reflectionary issue, which is that the Community Board 14 meeting was not only important, but it was vital because it brought on youth voice input. We saw over 40 individuals sign up, but there was actually over 60. Two buses of youth came out in support to discuss the importance of being able to go to college and come back and still stay in the Rockaways. This is an essential point that can't be lost in translation. I want to thank you all, it's appreciated.
Thank you very much. Roslyn Mason?
Good day all. My name is Roslyn Mason. I am the program manager for the Cure Violence Initiative in Far Rockaway, and this is a shelter-in-arms program. I am definitely for the project. And first and foremost, like Brandon said, the subsidized housing is a big piece for me, because rent, as we know, continuously goes up and goes up, and we don't necessarily get raises at our jobs that way. So in order, what I think about that is, somebody would have money in order to save. Now you could save money, so that this way you would be able to afford a home, to afford a condo, to send your kids to private schools, if that's what you wanted. You now have an opportunity to be able to know that your rent stays at one price, and if you get raises and bonuses, you would be able to do other things with your money. And as I said, being the program manager of the Cure Violence Initiative, I work in that area from 49th to 59th, and I see no recreational real space for the children to actually really play. We have recreation, but we're only a team of 10. We can't service the whole Rockaway with the recreation that we do have in place, but we try our best from one peninsula, from one end of the peninsula to the other, to give the kids the recreation that they need, and so also to change their mindset so that they want to be in Far Rockaway. And I think that the ARCA company is doing something really good, it's not in terms of how Far Rockaway is going to look. I myself have been a resident of Far Rockaway for a very long time, and Far Rockaway has looked the same for over five decades. You have not been able to see the area flourish, the area look like somewhere where you want to live. And with that being said, it has to change from the inside as well as the outside. So people want to see their neighborhood looking good, and they will take care of it. It's been looking the same, and I think that once we begin to look at that and see that we deserve housing, as these young people said, and housing that we can afford, these children deserve to have someplace, to have recreation, and to also get tutoring so they can flourish. I know that there's a need for a school, however, Arbor and by the Sea promised the school, not the ARCA company. So don't punish the ARCA company for what Arbor and by the Sea promised, although we do understand that education is important. And I do believe that with the community center, maybe they could be tutoring. And also, we have 42, we have two schools in that area already, which is 42 on Goldie Maple. Maybe we could figure out how we could extend 42. I see that there's a lot of dead land there. There's things that can happen, but now I believe it's time for change. I believe it's time for the subsidized housing to be there so that individuals could have someplace to live that they're proud of. Thank you.
Ms. Mason, thank you for the work for the developers.
Thank you.
And Reverend Brady, you got the last word. Call the developers back. Call the developers come back.
To our well-capable Borough President, uh, to this community, this project is desperately needed in our community, but it's also have shown something really dear to my heart that kind of hurts. It opens the door to show the divide in our community. The West End has its desires and needs, the East End feels a certain way, as the East End would like to have this project, but the West End feels that there are obstacles that need to be overcome in order for it to be reality. The problem that I see is, one, the East End has suffered a long time, with a lot of dormant land, land that's just been laying vacant for years. What I have seen come up in our community is shelters. What I've seen is bus garages, things of that nature. This is an opportunity to change the landscape of our community. And the people and the residents that are closest to this are more than welcoming of this project. Can it be tweaked? Probably so. But at this very moment, this is what we have, and this is what will bring jobs, what will bring homes, well, residents to our community, mixed income, this is what we need in that area. I mean, it may not be what others would like to see, maybe they want to see it scaled down, but for those who live closest to it, they have no problem with it. I don't feel that it is my right, or that I should say what happens in Breezy Point, I don't live in Breezy Point. They know what is best for Breezy Point and Bell Harbor, they know what is best for there. Do we need a school? Of course we need a school. Orver and By the Sea is supposed to be building a school. They, Orver and By the Sea, that development, which we all love, took public streets and made it private. People are getting their cars towed, a church sits right in the middle of there, who can't even have a place for their worshippers to park. But that was okay, that was fine. I'm saying to us, let's be one peninsula, but let's have respect for those who this project will affect most. Healthcare is, is more than important. We do need healthcare, and I suggest that as a community, that we look to bring a, I'm working on something with New York Presbyterian Hospital, but we need to work together as a community to bring it to our community. We need to stand together, and I support this project. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you Reverend Brady, thank you. Uh, can the Arca Group, or whoever is representing them, come back? So, uh, the school issue, have you, you must have assessed the undercount of seats, if there is any, uh, the percentage, what, what is it from your numbers?
So, um, the EIS identified a definite impact on the schools, um, it occurs at the completion of the fifth building. Um, we understand that, and we need to, um, we need to come up with an answer, um, before the ULP is completed.
How many buildings is in your first phase?
Uh, the first phase is two buildings, the second phase is two buildings, so it would occur at the completion of the third phase.
Of the third phase, okay, so right now, the statement of needs by the Department of Education, say that there is, uh, over, what does the statement of needs say now?
You know the exact numbers?
Do we know? Do you know how overcrowded the schools are right now?
Some of the schools actually are, are like not at over, you know, it's, they're the Arca, and all of them are.
No. I'm not, I'm not meaning to be difficult, I'm trying to, I'm trying to make a point, and I'm trying to figure something out. So, the schools right now are listed as underutilized or overutilized?
I mean, our study area includes the number, it doesn't just include one school, some of the schools are overutilized, and some are significantly underutilized. Um, so our project looks at the cumulative impact with all the new residents coming into Edgemere Commons, um, and the impact will occur, um, I believe it's in phase, it's at the end of phase three.
Okay, have you been in contact with the Department of Education on this?
So, City Planning and the School Construction Authority have already started talking.
Okay.
Um, they made it clear to us, along with HPD, that, um, during the ULP process, we need to collectively agree on what the path forward is to address the school needs, and that's our plan.
And so before this goes to the final vote at the council, you will have an answer to that?
Correct.
So what historically happens is, once buildings are built, and once units are built, then there has a statement of needs that's issued by the Department of Education, so they're working on that right now?
Yes, they're working on it, and we're anticipating City Hall, School Construction Authority, HPD, City Planning, and us all sitting together and coming up with a solution, because we understand it's a need that we have to address.
And you intend on doing that before the final vote at the council?
Yes.
Okay, but according to your EIS, and I don't know this, and I'll ask SCA directly, um, the statement of needs or the, the, the need for new seats don't come up until the third phase, which is the fifth building?
Correct.
Because of the underutilization and overutilization in some of the seats. Okay, are you considering putting a pre-K at all in your building, or in your site as you grow?
We would definitely consider it, we put pre-K in some of our other buildings throughout the city, um, you know, it's part of the conversation with SCA, um, but we, we've done it before, we would definitely consider it.
All right, I would suggest, I mean, whatever decision I make on, one of the conditions is probably going to be a pre-K. Uh, I do think it does a few things, right, it allows people to bring their children to pre-K without traveling somewhere, and so they have it right there, it's convenient to go to work, but it also empties out of the seats in others, in the schools, uh, and it makes the schools less crowded that have pre-Ks right now. So I do think as you're moving forward, if you could start thinking seriously about that, you, you know, there's eighteen seats in one pre-K, so usually people do four or so, um, but if you could think about that. You have a community facility of seventy-seven thousand feet?
Correct, so we have seventy-seven thousand throughout the development, and it could use for any, um, type of community facility space, including education, medical, community center.
Is that in the first phase or the second phase?
It's gonna be split throughout.
Can we make some of it in the first phase?
Sure.
Okay, um, and, like, you know, a good portion of it in the first phase, and we'd be interested to figure out how you intend on working with the nonprofits, or whatever it is that, uh, utilize it. You and I, I mean, we have spoken about this project for a while now, um, we've spoken about a freestanding ER. I know that you've had issues of getting hospitals, uh, have we dismissed that for now, because we don't have a hospital that's interested, or are we still looking?
We don't dismiss any ideas, we've met with Northwell, we've met with Mount Sinai and South Nassau, who are looking at the Rockaways collectively, um, you know, we're gonna continue those meetings, um, with them, we're also, um, we're meeting with the Adabo Center next week about, um, possibilities for expansion here, yeah.
So, just so everybody knows, we've had previous discussions that point throughout time, about a freestanding ER in the Rockaways to make healthcare more accessible, uh, not urgent care facilities, urgent care facilities need insurance, and need, you'd be able to pay for it, and the whole bit, we're talking about either freestanding ERs or clinics, like Adabo, that you can go into, no matter what, anytime, anyplace, uh, and so we have spoken about that, a freestanding ER does not have hospital beds, but it frees up the ERs from the area, uh, and the clinics from the area. Um, hold on, what other question?
We would welcome your support with the hospital networks and advocating for that.
Okay, uh, the restaurant idea, any thoughts?
Yeah, that, that's a big focus of ours, um, we, um, we believe food is an integral part of the community, not just a supermarket, but, but places to dine, and, you know, specifically, um, the folks that we met with in Edgemere, that's been one of their top priorities, is to have restaurants incorporated here. Um, a lot of the outreach we've done, not just with local organizations, but it's been with a lot of the entrepreneurs in the area, and it's been focused on food businesses, um, and we have a number of Rockaway-based restaurants that want to be here, so, um, we believe that's gonna be, um, a major aspect of this project.
Okay, do you have any questions? All right, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you Borough President.
So before I close the item, let me just say, first of all, I, I respect everyone that came here to testify, I understand, a lot of you took time from your jobs, a lot of you doing it for the first time, some of you had to skip school, all of the bit that brings you here today, so we appreciate it. Uh, we do appreciate the involvement of the young people, and I know that people have said that, but it is nice to see, um, you know, young people come out and testify and be part of the governmental process, I think that is so important. And so we appreciate everyone coming out. I was getting there. Uh, we appreciate every, everybody that came out to testify, we understand what's at issue here. Um, you know, this has been a lifelong, as far as my life goes, discussion on how we handle the future of the Rockaways, I do sense, uh, a lot more involvement from all sides of the Rockaways, from west to east, and I think that's a great thing. So we appreciate it, and the item is now closed. As much as we appreciate everyone having discussions, and that's great, we should keep talking, uh, can we take it outside, because we have the, the hearing to continue,
High attention, we have a very long calendar, so we appreciate if you could continue the conversations outside. We're gonna resume the calendar with number eight. That would be BSA number two-one-zero-nine-eight-four-BZ, will applicant, he's come forward?
Item number eight. All right, we can allow just the regular schedule, all right, you're up, so then we'll go back to the regular schedule. Okay. If, uh, everyone can bring the conversation outside, we encourage active conversation outside the room. Hi.
Hi, good morning Madam Borough President, Frank St. Jacques Akerman LLP for the applicant. This is a special permit application to the Board of Standards and Appeals to allow a, a two-thousand-seven-hundred-seventy-three-square-foot fitness center at one-oh-seven-dash-ten-seventieth Road. This is for an Orange Theory Fitness, that's been operating since March, um, we received a, an approval from, uh, the Community Board, Community Board six, um, and I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions.
How long is the permit, please?
The, uh, we're asking for a, uh, term of ten years, which is the maximum term.
So you've been operating for a while without a permit?
Correct, so the application was, was filed, uh, May first, the location opened, uh, at the end of March, um, so what the BSA typically does is reduce the, the term if this were granted.
It would be as of March.
Correct.
I mean, I was there last night, it looks like it's operating well.
Uh, they're doing really well, and there's been no issues, as far as I know.
To be clear, I wasn't working out, I was just on the road.
That's a great location.
Okay, any questions for you?
I'll note, I'm also item nine on the calendar, if we'd like to hear that, for another PC.
Is it gonna be as short as this one?
It will.
Okay, yes, then go.
Great.
But let, at least a caller first, someone needs to call her first.
Item number nine, BSA number two-four-one-nine-eight-eight-BZ, applicant, Rockwood, Rockwood Inspector LLP, affecting Community Board number eleven.
Logan, good afternoon, Madam Borough President, Eric Paladnik, it's nice to see you today, thank you for taking the time to hear the application that we have for you. Uh, I'm standing up on behalf of Adam Rothkrug of Rothkrug, Rothkrug Inspector, and this is an application to the Board of Standards and Appeals to the property at one-ninety-one dash twenty Northern Boulevard, uh, which is more or less a strip mall, uh, for lack of a better term, it's a one-story commercial building that's been there for thirty years under BSA variance, believe it or not, even though it's on Northern Boulevard, it's between one-hundred-and-ninety-first and one-hundred-and-ninety-second, even though it's on Northern Boulevard, it's within an R-zone, an R-three-two. This is one of those portions of Northern Boulevard that never caught up with the zoning, uh, so it's been operating under a variance. So because of that, it's had to come back to the BSA every ten years, so we're here now asking you for approval to increase the term, or renew the term for a period of ten years, and we're also asking permission to subdivide on the eastern, the western end of the lot, the lot was very big, uh, there was a lot of vacant land, a portion of it was being used for parking, uh, it, it all was being used for parking, uh, we've asked to sever, uh, about fifty, fifty-by-a-hundred portion of it from the site that's under BSA approval, uh, we still have all of our required parking, so we're just essentially shrinking the size of the lot, uh, we're taking the vacant portion of the land, and we subdivided that, or asking permission to subdivide that off, uh, that doesn't need any special zoning action, the only way it affects the previous variance would be that that whole area was used for parking before.
All right, should we sort it out? The Community Board voted unanimously.
To support it, which is a, a good testament to the support of Community Board eleven.
With some community issues, right, garbage, landscaping, and stuff like that.
Yes, around the parking area, which they'll be abiding by, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Seeing nobody to testify, item is closed.
Good morning, uh, Borough President, uh, so my name is Juan Reyes, I'm here for a renewal of a term, uh, for, for after, for a special permit of, uh, BSA section seventy-two, two-forty-three, um, so we were before the Community Board last month, and we received a unanimous approval, um, my associate actually did a negotiation with the, uh, Community Board, helping them, uh, address their concern, we're opposite of a S.O.S. is here, and the owner, Patrick Miller, um, who is the, um, owner of this McDonald's on the site, and employs seventy people of this site, which has been operating since two-thousand-three, so, and this is just a term for five-year renewal, and, uh, great, great questions.
My understanding is the community does not The Community Board voted unanimously.
To support it, which is a good testament to the support of Community Board Eleven.
With some community issues, right? Garbage, landscaping, and stuff like that.
Yes, around the parking area, which they'll be abiding by, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Seeing nobody to testify, item is closed.
Good morning, Borough President. So my name is Lon Reyes. I'm here for a renewal of a term for, perhaps, for a special permit, BSA Section 72-243. So we were before the Community Board last month, and we received unanimous approval. My associate actually did a negotiation with the Community Board, helping them address their concern. We're opposite of a S.O.S. is here, and the owner, Patrick Miller, who is the owner of this McDonald's and the site, and employs 70 people of this site, which has been operating since 2003. So again, this is just a term for five-year renewal. Great, great questions.
My understanding is the community does not object to this.
They do not.
But they have some replacing of the speed bump, which is on your land, I assume, not the city's land. Better signs directing vehicles, which I find always a problem. Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Questions, or, no? Item is closed. Oh, no, item is not closed. We have one person to testify, Mr. Jacobs.
Hello, everybody. I'm from the Coalition of the Rockaways, but I'm involved in Willis Point, in that area. I wanted to understand that who's responsible for the accidents? My mother fell over a speed bump. Who's responsible for the accidents that happen there? What about the businesses that are in there? Why is there a special break? These McDonald's? I understand that. What are the conditions to what the Community Board voted for? I wasn't at that meeting. I would like to know what that is. I understand that they approved it with conditions, but what are the conditions? That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Conditions are public record, number one. Number two, you weren't there, because it's not in your neighborhood. It's Community Board Seven, if I'm not mistaken. But anyway, you can follow up with the public documents. They are available. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Calendar item number three, BSA number 2019156BD. The applicant, Amato Law Group, E.P.L.E., for effecting Community Board Number Thirteen.
This is Deputy Borough President, Sharon Lee.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Greg Alvarez from Amato Law Group, here on behalf of Goldfish Swim School, seeking a physical culture health establishment special permit pursuant to 32-31 and 73-36 under the zoning resolution. The location of this project is 25709 Union Turnpike Glen Oaks, which is the Glen Oaks Shopping Center. Goldfish Swim School would be occupying the existing Dwayne Reed space within the existing shopping center and would retrofit it for their purposes. Specifically, Goldfish Swim School is operating nationwide. There are actually two locations locally. They're both on Long Island, so this would be the first location in Queens. It's designed to teach infants and toddlers and children, to teach them in a safe environment. So we were looking, we'd be looking for a special permit, and we'd be looking for the 10-year term in this instance. I do have Ram Weideman on behalf of Goldfish Swim here to answer any questions, if you have some.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. What's the capacity of the swim school?
Sure. So typically, the capacity would be on the order of, have it right here. So it'd be, at peak capacity, it would be 104. So that would, for breakdown purposes, that would be 44 students, 10 instructors, and then the folks who may be waiting for the next session.
And what's considered peak time?
Peak times are typically in afternoons during the week, and then on Saturdays.
And I understand the Board Thirteen approved this application with no objection?
That's correct.
All right, great. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
And with no, no members of the public here to testify, the item is now closed.
Good morning. My name is Jay Goldstein, on behalf of the Beachfront Developers LLC, for the property known as 120 Beach Ninth Street, which is on Beach Ninth Street and the water. The proposed variance seeks waiver of floor area height setbacks and parking for this site. The site is located in R6 district of approximately 19,759 square feet. It's a vacant L-shaped property with 168 feet of frontage on Beach Ninth, 93 feet of frontage on Beach Eighth, and 209 feet of frontage facing the water. The proposal for you is for, as a result of the waterfront property, we're required to limit our lot coverage to 20% per DEC regulations. We actually approached DEC for a variance, which they've already considered previously, and we're considering again to allow 25% lot coverage. Under the R6, the regular lot coverage is 65%. My client, who owns buildings directly behind the property, built those buildings to 65% and was able to make a return. The reason we're here today is because the 25% requires a smaller footprint on the lot and requires the building to go taller in order to make a return on the investment. Proposal would be a 17-story, 78,000-square-feet building. We'd have, the first floor would be just the entryway with parking, the second floor would be community facility, 4,800 square feet, and floors three through 17 would be residential with four units per floor. The proposal is 60 units and 14 parking spaces. The required parking space is 30 spaces. We have 14 on our site. The reason for the parking restriction, or the parking waiver that we're requesting, is a result of the fact that DEC regulations don't allow us to put more parking on the site. So in order to make a return on this investment, we're asking for this 17-story building. In terms of character of the neighborhood, we're directly adjacent to the Sandcastle Developments, which are 25 stories and much taller, much bigger than the proposal for you. I have a photograph that you can see, photograph thirteen in the package, actually, this photograph, number 12, sorry, in the package, shows you, a bit outdated, they were recently painted white, of the Sandcastle properties that you see. That structure that you see was historically used as a, the structure that you see behind our site, was historically used by the FDMY as a scuba training, and we intend to discuss with them as well, and go back to them once the building, if the building is approved, to discuss giving them space within our building to re-activate that use. Do you have any questions we can have to answer?
When was the property acquired?
The property was acquired a long time ago, probably more than 10 years ago, not exactly sure.
And were the restrictions understood?
The restrictions were not. They thought there was a bulkhead in place when they bought the property. Sorry. The, when the property was purchased, there was understanding that there was a bulkhead in place, which would have allowed them to build under the 65%. When they went through the process, when, after they acquired it and started developing the site, they realized that the bulkhead was not there, and even if they built the bulkhead back, DEC regulations would still limit them.
We understand the site conditions necessitate you having less lot coverage than normal. One question I have would be about the FAR increase. Understanding your limitations, why could you not put the FAR that's authorized under the zoning into that taller building and then get variances on the building height and that kind of thing?
So we're asking, and as a right building, we produce a 12-story building. In order to make a return based on the elevated construction costs of going above eight stories, which I'm told or understand is the threshold for high-rise versus regular construction, we would hit setback regulations at 60 feet and cap out the building at 110. So while we'd be able to maximize the FAR, we wouldn't make a return unless we ask for the requested waivers, which include the floor area to have those extra floors.
You're asking for approximately 60% increase in FAR. You couldn't achieve it with less than that?
The return that we're showing as a, for an as-of-right building, was negative almost 5%, and the return that we're showing under the proposed building is only about a half a percent.
And the negative return is due to?
The negative return is due to the elevated construction cost in developing with an as-of-right building and maximizing the as-of-right FAR.
And you're proposing point two for community facility space. What would the effect of increasing the community facility space versus residential do to the project?
So the community facility space wouldn't increase the return as much. We'd do better with residential. Additionally, if we had a, if we wanted to increase the community facility space, we would lose residential floors, or we'd have to go taller on this building. So the return, although as-of-right, we can do about 98,000 square feet of community facility, which our proposed building is less than that number, the return on the community facility wouldn't, wouldn't make a return for us, or a positive return.
All right, thank you. If you'll just stand by, we have a few speakers in case we have any follow-up questions. Up first, we have Eugene Phallic. Is Mr. Eugene Phallic of Dickens Street here? Okay. Bruce Jacobs, speaking against.
Once again, I'm the Coalition of the Rockaways, New York State Medical and Religious Freedom. I'm from Edgemere. I'm from Far Rockaway. First of all, there's no parking in that area. Second of all, why is there some special variance to this building? They tried that in Metro North, they used to call it Metro Tech. It turned into a disaster where they had to close the building for about two years, and then they reopened it. It's all like, you know, subsidized housing. They want to go from 12 floors to 17 floors. I don't understand this. Why? When you got houses and everybody right across the street living. Why is there special preference to this project? The board, the Community Board, voted 29 to 0 against this project. We don't need any special thing. Why couldn't they be satisfied with just the 12-story building? In my opinion, if you're going to go market rate or whatever you're going to do with it, then 12 stories, keep it at 12 stories. Why do you need a variance to go 17 stories in a neighborhood out of character with the neighborhood? It just don't, I don't understand this. We want our neighborhood to be built up. We don't want our neighborhood just to have tall skyscrapers, like the other man said, it's a desert. If it's such a desert, then how are they going to approve 17 floors in such a desert neighborhood where there's nothing? I understand for the work, if they do give the dirty to BJ, I would love to see jobs for the neighborhood, but if they do that, and that's not no guarantee. Thank you very much for listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. With no further speakers, the item is now closed. We will take a point of personal privilege and move on to calendar item number 20. take a point of personal privilege and move on to calendar item number 20.
On the property as well as that the house be built to current floodplain compliance.
If you'll just stand by, we have a couple, I think we have one public speaker, just for some Q and A.
I also want to recognize we have Emily from the Parks Department who can answer questions specifically.
Before we go to the speaker, we have one more question.
It's our understanding that the Community Board 14 had questions about the housing sites and about the way they would be disposed. Do you have any response?
Yes, so their condition that I believe they'll be putting in their recommendation was that the sites slated for affordable housing be switched over to the market rate pathway. That's something we're curious to hear more about through the U-Lar process.
So immediately you don't have any response to that?
I mean, I would say several things on this issue. The goal from HUD is to facilitate the expedient redevelopment and recovery of these communities. And for housing sites, that means the redevelopment as housing. We've learned particularly through the Borough President's TND Task Force that the Governor's Office of Storm Recovery, which also has an acquisition for redevelopment program, has really struggled to redevelop their storm damaged housing through auctions. And that the buyers of those sites have not been able to redevelop housing. We think that there's a great opportunity here for the city to manage the redevelopment through our affordable housing programs, through our RFP, so that we can see that redevelopment happen and to see that redevelopment happen in a way that is floodplain compliant. The housing we are seeking to redevelop is affordable homeownership for middle income homeowners. We're not seeking to put extremely low income households in a context where they might not be able to afford maintenance of the structure. And also recognizing that the costs of flood insurance are likely to grow over time. So these houses are going to be priced, recognizing the cost of flood insurance as part of that cost of homeownership, but also trying to keep the communities of Rockaway mixed income communities.
Great, thank you. If you'll just stand by as we hear from the public speaker. First and only Bruce Jacobs, speaking against.
My name is Bruce Jacobs, Coalition of Rockaway, New York State Medical and Religious Freedom. I'm not against open space. I was at the Community Board. I'm for open space. There is one problem that I see here. Beach 45th Street, a parcel of land that you say is going to affordable housing. That is bothering me. I live on that block. Why is that not going on the RFK? People in my neighborhood have money. They want that land. Navies, just like Broad Channel, just like Breezy Point, we want, have a chance to get this property. You say affordable housing is a guarantee that it's going to be market rate? Or is it going to be a big 17-story building that's only going to be low income? You say that it's going to be two-family homes. Is there guarantees? We'd like to see the guarantees. Another thing is on Beach, I see a lot of places in Rockaway, on the east side. How come they're not on the RFKs? How come they're off the RFKs?
Mr. Jacobs, I'm going to ask that you direct your testimony.
Okay, sorry. How come they're off the RFKs? That's my question to you. I know a lot of people don't like to listen to this. It's probably like a proof deal left and right, but I was at the Community Board. So like I said, I am for the open space for Broad Channel. I'm for the open space of anybody that lives next door that they could take care of their land because it's better. But these parcels of land on Beach 45th, on 72nd Street I see, on 86th Street, I'm worried about that because if a developer is going to get it, he's going to end up getting a decision. I want the decision to be the people's decision. Not a nonprofit, not a whatever, not a development, not a councilman. I want it to be just like anybody else, that we have a chance to get this land. I don't understand why Far Rockaway's place, Edgemere, that's where I live on Beach 45th, right up the block from these four parcels, I don't want to see giant buildings on my block. We homeowners, also people with buildings, we deserve a say in this matter. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Seeing as there are no other speakers, the item is now closed. Thank you, Ms. Peterson and Ms. Morris. And with that, we will resume our regular calendar item number...
Calendar number five, BSA number 20195822. The applicant Sheldon Mobell PC, Executive Community Board Number 1.
Good afternoon, Deputy Borough President. My name is David Rosenberg from Sheldon Mobell PC. On behalf of Corbal Fit, a gym located in Queens Village. This application was filed in January. Before the gym was opened, the facility opened up on about April 15th of this year. We're asking for a special permit under 7336 to occupy approximately 3,400 square feet in a substantially larger manufacturing building that includes a Volker plant, some offices for utility companies, and some transportation facilities. The gym's been running. It's a small local business. It's a different kind of gym than the chains that we usually see. So far, it's going well. There haven't been any issues. And the Community Board recommended approval unanimously. And so in the interest of keeping this short, I'll just go straight if you have any questions about the proposal.
Thank you. Did you say your name was Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg, okay. David, did you say the business has been in operation since April?
Yes.
So you're requesting a special permit?
Yeah. So as we've seen earlier in this hearing and in many other hearings, the PCE process of getting the special permit for physical culture establishments is oftentimes onerous. And especially for small businesses, the carrying costs of actually holding the space while the BSA process, which can take well over a year, goes on, it just becomes burdensome. This application was filed with the intention of having the special permit for operation.
When was it filed?
In early January of this year.
2019?
Yes. And then by the time April came around, it was becoming burdensome. And they opened up and started operations to be able to start recouping some membership fees.
So is the business operating without a permit?
Yes, it's operating without the special permit, yes.
Without a special permit?
Yeah.
What was at the site prior?
And this is a big manufacturing plant. So they took one part on the end of the site and converted about 3,400 square feet of it to be used as this kind of PCE.
So we understand that the special permit was filed in January prior to the opening of this gym. But how much advance notice did this property owner have that they were interested to use this space as a PCE?
I'm not sure that number exactly. What I'd note is that unlike many of the chain gyms that we find here that are franchises or other large corporations, this is a local business of local operators who came from the world of personal training and wanted to open up a small facility to reach a target audience. And so they're newer to the world of this kind of development.
Okay, so this PCE would occupy a portion of an existing industrial building. When did that space become vacant? Is this a building of small industrial uses or is it a large single user?
So there are multiple uses. The largest one is the Volker plant, which occupies most of the site. Other uses, I believe National Grid has some facilities there. There is a dehabilitation facility further down on the other end of the site as well.
So it's not one huge user of this particular building?
The primary user is Volker, which is the actual industrial use. And then they occupy what is essentially the middle section of what's a very large building. And the other uses are on the far end.
So do we know when this space to be occupied by PCE became vacant?
I don't know that offhand, but I can follow up.
And we don't know how much advance notice the property owner had that a PCE was interested in this space?
What's the patron capacity of this space?
The design capacity is for about 60 people at one time. This is a gym that is really based on the model of classes and certain individual therapies. So they can control the capacity. Well, it is designed to hold about 60 people at a time.
Great, thank you, Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you.
With no speakers on tap, the item is now closed.
Calendar item number six, BSA number 20195822. The applicant Sheldon Mobell PC, Executive Community Board Number 1.
Good afternoon again, David Rosenberg on behalf of Sheldon Mobell PC. This is also, will be a short application. This is an application for a variance for a home at 31-4541st Street in Community Board One. This is a uniquely narrow site, something that you see a lot in this area. It's about a 21-foot width site. There's an existing house that goes back to approximately 1911 that sits in the legally required rear yard of the property there. The owner here would like to construct a two-family home that is up to code and is modern construction. And the zoning rules for the R5 district present themselves that either you could build a detached home with two side yards of five feet each. So you'd end up with an approximately 11-foot wide house. Or you can abut one of the existing buildings, but that would also require an eight-foot side yard. So you'd be left with about a 13-foot house. Neither of those are particularly practical. And so we're seeking a variance to allow the construction of a two-family home that does not provide any of the required side yards.
There are no speakers. The item is now closed.
Thank you.
Calendar item number seven, BSA number 20195822. The applicant, J. Goldstein for the applicant, Executive Community Board Number 10.
Good afternoon, J. Goldstein for the applicant. I'm here on behalf of Chuck E. Cheese today. Chuck E. Cheese is a family entertainment facility, which many of the people in the room understand and know. It's split between food and tables for sitting and games where you can redeem points and for prizes. It's focused and primarily targeted towards toddlers, children, and young teens. The reason we're here today is for a special permit under 73244 for a youth group 12 eating and drinking establishment with a capacity of more than 200 people. While this may seem like it should be a youth group six or regular retail, there's a Department of Buildings Policy Precision Notice which dictates the use and how it has to be run and what safeguards are in place to ensure that this type of facility can operate safely. The special permit requires us to provide a certain number of findings. Our space is 14,404 square feet. We have a determination from the DOB that the space can have an occupancy of 456 people. Part of the requirement for the special permit is that we provide an enclosed waiting area to accommodate that number of people. So the proposed waiting area is 1,904 square feet. That can accommodate 476 people, which exceeds the occupancy that we're proposing. This is meant to ensure that the patrons who come to the space will be kept off the street. So that'll ensure they're kept off the street. In addition, the facility is located within the Linden Shopping Center. It's taking over an existing space. There's sufficient parking, approximately 555 parking spaces, plus an additional nine that we'll be creating as part of the application. All of this will ensure that the use is compatible with the residential surrounding community, compatible with the shopping center, and will not cause anything undue impact to the neighborhood. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Great, thank you, Mr. Goldstein. I understand the Board, Board 10, approved the application?
Yes.
With the condition that should the establishment change in the future, that it be brought back?
So the special permit's a three-year term anyway, so we'll be back. And the special permit's also tied to Chuck E. Cheese. So if it does change, BSA requirements also require us to go back. So I'm fine with that.
Great, thank you, Mr. Goldstein.
Thank you very much.
With no speakers on tap, the item is now closed. We will take a point of personal privilege once again and move on to calendar item number 17. Out of respect to our officials from the Fire Department, we know your time is... Well, everyone's time is precious, but we would like to free you up a little bit here.
Calendar item number 17, U-Lar number 19042422. The applicant, New York City's Fire Department and Department of Environmental Services, Executive Community Board Number 1.
Good morning, actually, good afternoon. My name is David Harney. I'm the Chief of Staff and Deputy Fire Commissioner. The item before the Borough President this afternoon is for site selection acquisition of a parcel of private space at 194042nd Street in the Steinway section of Astoria. So the Fire Department may relocate and expand EMS operations in that area of the borough. I'm joined this afternoon by Captain Casparine, the Commander of EMS Station 49, and Chief Petrokayev of our Queens Borough Command. The application will allow the Fire Department to lease approximately 22,000 square feet of an existing building, which will enable the agency to expand operations from a current facility that is located under the RFK Triborough Bridge and about 3,600 square feet of trailers. The long and short of the issue is that the Fire Department has outgrown the space under the Triborough. Additionally, we've had some issues concerning kitchen droppings, the continued rattle from the bridge itself. But we look at this as a continued advancement of our operations in this area of the borough. 20 years ago, the agency was located in basement space at Western Queens, now Mount Sinai Hospital, Queens. When that space was lost because of expansion by the hospital, we moved quickly to continue operations in the area by working with the Parks Department to use this space under the Triborough. And because this area is parkland, the Fire Department has to relinquish it and work with our partners at D-CAS and OMB. We've identified a landlord who is willing to work with us. And so that is why we're pursuing this application currently. Captain, how many units are we running? Currently, we're running...
Currently, we run 10 ambulances, a mixture of advanced and mid-class.
And this will enable, this new facility will enable the Fire Department to meet its obligations both today and moving forward. Community Board One met on this action last month and voted for this unanimously. And with that, we think this is an exceptional project for the Fire Department for our operations. And with that, I'll take any more questions.
Thank you. Was that Mr. Harney or Harvey?
Harney.
Harney. Thank you, Mr. Harney. How long is the duration of the lease?
Well, right now, D-CAS is still working with the landlord to develop the lease. We're hoping that right now, a term sheet is nearing completion. And we're hoping to have the lease ready for signature once the land use action is completed, which we anticipate based on the U-Lar timetable as sometime towards the end of September. And then, you know, just the way, we don't ask D-CAS or tell D-CAS how to negotiate leases. They don't tell us how to, you know, provide fire protection services. So we leave that up to those pros.
And would you know whether there were other locations that were explored?
Fire Department conducted, and working with D-CAS, conducted an in-depth search. I believe we looked at about 45 separate locations to relocate this parcel. Unfortunately, in the Astoria-Steinway area of the borough, it's very built up. And there's a limited amount of vacant land. I mean, there are three or four Department of Transportation municipal parking lots. As I said to the board, if I came to them saying, "We want to build an ambulance station there," they wouldn't be that very pleased with us because they're right in the middle of the central business district. So we did conduct this in-depth search. And then D-CAS came along with, working with their tenant representatives, and identified this parcel of private property which was being marketed for lease. And we found that the area is optimal for unit deployment and in terms of the size.
Great, thank you, Mr. Harney. And thank you for your patience. Next time, please holler. Your time is very valuable. And thank you for everything the department does. No speakers on tap, and the item is now closed. Thank you. With that, we will resume back onto our regular calendar, I believe, item number 10.
Calendar item number 10, related items, U-Lar number 19043922, The applicant, Free Frank Harris Schreiber Jacobson, Executive Community Board Number 4.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. My name is Jeremy Cozen. I'm a land use attorney with Free Frank Harris Schreiber Jacobson, here with George Fontis, Fontis Advisors. We're here today on behalf of LSS Leasing Limited Liability Company to present an application to facilitate the continued use of a three-story garage at 5817 Junction Boulevard. This is the commercial section of LeFrec City. The garage was subject to a prior special permit that had a term of 50 years. And the garage has successfully operated throughout that period. This application seeks to continue the garage's use, does not include any new development, enlargement, or changes to the garage except additional group screening to comply with existing zoning regulations. Last month, Queens CB4 voted 22 to 1 to approve this application. And we're here to give a little bit of background and answer any questions if necessary. As you can see on the prepared materials, the site is located in a C44 zoning district. It is approximately 212,402 square feet of lot area. It contains two office buildings, which include various government agencies, primarily DEP, NYPD, the IRS, and ConEd, as well as some other smaller commercial tenants. There is also a post office and coffee shop located on the zoning lot. There... Did you have a question?
No.
Okay. There are two curb cuts to enter the zoning lot. One is on Harris Harding Expressway, and one is on Junction Boulevard. And both of these entrances are used by DEP. The entrance on Junction Boulevard is used also by the public and the other commercial tenants on the zoning lot. So just to recap, in 1968, the Board of Estimet granted a special permit under 74512 for this garage with 870 spaces, roof parking, and an exemption for floor area below 23 feet above curb level. We are seeking the exact same special permit, but instead of 870 spaces, we only require 706. This is broken up into 350 spaces on the roof and 356 spaces on the first and second floors. So the number of striped parking spaces will match what is currently there today, even though 870 was permitted back in 1968. Additionally, the applicant requests a zoning text amendment to allow for the garage to meet its parking demands without providing unnecessary reservoir spaces. And the condition in order that is part of the text amendment is that the applicant must show that the continued use will not add serious traffic congestion or unduly inhibit vehicular traffic and pedestrian flow in the surrounding area. Our application includes a parking study that indicates that we do meet that condition. And we believe that the Community Board recognized that and agreed. So in conclusion, this application allows for the continued use of the garage in the same manner as approved in 1968. And will allow for the DEP to continue to have the exclusive use of the roof for their parking, as well as for commercial tenants to use the other two floors of the parking garages and the public to use those two floors as well. And we will be adding the requisite screening to comply with current regulations. So I thank you for your time, and we'll take any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Cozen. So just to be clear, so 706 parking spaces, half of which are DEP and half of which are...?
Roughly. 350 on the roof, DEP.
Okay.
356 within the first two floors, some of which are DEP, but also are other commercial tenants on the ground.
Got it.
And the public.
And did you say Board Four, what was the vote?
22.
20?
In favor.
In favor?
Was I... Did I miss?
It's inconsistent with what I have in front of me, but we'll check into that. Our records show that the Board voted unanimously in favor, more in your favor.
Even better. We were wondering why one person were against this.
Do we know why?
There was no reason. Explain it. It might have been an error.
Okay.
It might have been unanimous.
Okay.
You mentioned in the, aside from the rooftop part, that DEP has some other spaces in the other portion of the building? I believe that... Well, really, the number is not... Is it by formal lease as we have with the rooftop?
Or...? By formal lease for the rooftop, and I believe the lease does include some amount of space on the first and second floors as well. I'm not 100% sure how many they lease on the ground floor and the second.
And just out of curiosity, what would the reservoir space requirement be if we were to adhere to a 35 reservoir spaces?
Thank you, Mr. Cozen. Thank you, Mr. Fontis. Seeing as how there are no speakers, the item is now closed.
Calendar item number 12, U-Lar number 18028222. The applicant, Eric Palatnick, PC, Executive Community Board Number 4.
Hello, good afternoon, Eric Palatnick. Is it okay, Mr. Poeh, if I hit Ctrl-Delete to bring up the... Would that bring up the imagery on the screen there?
You may.
Oh, but I don't have the password. There's keyboard here, yeah, on this device. It's always the passwords that are the most difficult. All right. I don't have the mouse. I'm sorry, I know everybody. I'll start talking while everybody is setting that up. Good afternoon, my name is Eric Palatnick. I'm here today to speak on behalf of Dennis O'Connor Funeral Home. Dennis O'Connor Funeral Home is shown right there. There, Mr. Poeh, got it up there. I'm doing that, right? Yep. Okay, great. I got it, Mr. Poeh, thank you. That's good enough. It's perfect. So that's the building right there. It's Dennis O'Connor Funeral Home. It's been in the Rockaways. It's on the other end of the peninsula from the earlier hearing you heard about. And it is an existing funeral home. It's been there for the better part of the last century. They are located within an R41 zoning district, and it's an existing non-conforming use. We are here today to ask your permission to rezone the property, to rezone it to a commercial overlay, which would be a C23, which more accurately represents what's on the property now as opposed to the residential. And the purpose of the rezoning is, A, to bring the funeral home into compliance with current zoning. It was built under BSA variance, and it's had to go back through the years. The other reason why we're asking for the rezoning is because there's been a small modest enlargement at the back of the building, which I'll show you in a second, and that needs to be legalized. And the only way to do that is either through a variance or a rezoning. So we are here today to ask you for a rezoning. And this shows you the striped areas, the area of the rezoning that the funeral home occupies. The area in red is, or the number two on it, is where the building is that you were just looking at. You can't see this, so I'm not going to click right through it. This gives you a little bit of a good idea to where the site is. I know it's hard to see from your perspective right there. It's not the big building at the bottom of the screen on the right. It's to the left of it. So it's not the one that's like an inverted V, but rather it's the site to the left. And that's the funeral home. And to the left of that, you can see the parking lot for the funeral home. It's interesting to note, across the street is a McDonald's. So the commercial overlay that we're asking you to impose here is similar to what's going on across the street with all the commercial activity. This is the zoning change map, which goes through what I was just showing you. And the rezoning will encompass everything you see there and will allow for the funeral home to exist in perpetuity. So that's, in essence, the application. It was unanimously supported, or pretty close to being unanimously supported, community board. And I'd have to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Palatnick. If you'll just stand by, we have one speaker registered for this item. First up, first and only up, Mr. Jacobs.
My name is Bruce Jacobs, Coalition of Rockaway, New York State Medical and Religious Freedom. Dennis O'Connor Funeral Home is very good to the neighborhood. However, I represent my neighborhood. They've been operating for many years. They do very good things for the neighborhood. But now, all of a sudden, they want a variance. Now, why? Why do they want it all of a sudden? For years, they've operated with no problem, without the variance. Now, will I be allowed to open up near my house? Will I be allowed to make a variance because I want to, you know, change my backyard or I want to change a business? Now, the reason I say that is not because, like I said, they're a good business, you know, they do good for the neighborhood. But if one company gets it, why can't everybody get the same kind of rights? I'm just curious. Now, they're changing from industrial, which a lot of homeowners, maybe they don't want, change to industrial and all kind of changes. Is it like a very big difference? Can I ask you? Is there a big difference in the legality of the... Of what the change is? Like, they've been operating with no problem on an R4. Now they want it. They say it's just technical. That I would like to know. Is it just technical or is it more involved? I would like to have it just to make sure that it stays, that they get the thing, that they can't change and then all of a sudden build a giant building. And then after they sell it, that it becomes a big skyscraper and a big office building. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Seeing as how there are no further speakers, one question, Mr. Palatnick. Are there any development plans as a result of this application?
No, no, there are not. And you and Mr. Jacobs have both keyed in on to topics that have been discussed already. We submitted a letter into the record recently, which we could add to you to... We might have received it, but we could send it to you if you have not. The concern has come up, and that he's echoing, which is a reasonable concern, is why are they coming all of a sudden for the rezoning? And the rezoning will facilitate... Somebody else can then come and build something commercial there should they leave. So to answer the question and give everybody some confidence, we gave a letter saying that they have no intention of leaving. They'll be there for another 100 years. They are the only funeral home in the Rockaways. Funeral homes are very location-specific, obviously, so they're not going anywhere. The reason they need the approval, to your point, is because they've been operating in, A, as I said earlier, under BSA variance, which is uncertain and lends uncertainty; B, there's an enlargement at the back that needs to be legalized, this will allow it; the generation, more to the point, is switching. The elder generation is leaving, there's a younger generation... Or retired, they're 80 years old, and there's a younger generation coming in. So there's the hope right now is to clean up the site, get all the paperwork in order and get the zoning in order, so that the next generation could step into place and not be encumbered with an illegal enlargement at the back and zoning that doesn't match what's on the site. And we did give a letter from Mr. O'Connor himself, Vincent, saying that he has no intention of leaving and that they've been there for 100 years and this is not a desire to knock this down and build another McDonald's or any other kind of commercial use there, but rather continue on with the funeral home.
Thank you for that assurance and clarification.
Yes, you're welcome.
Seeing as how there are no other speakers, the item is now closed. Thank you, Mr. Palatnick.
Thank you.
Calendar item number 1415 are related items. Rule number 190124CQ. Rule number 19040CRQ. Calendar item number 13. Rule number C180291CQ. The applicant, Acreman LLP. The community board number 14.
Good afternoon. Jacqueline Scoranty of Acreman LLP for the applicant. I'm joined by Steve Satacory, also of Acreman. And the owner, Angelo Grazia, is here as well. We are here for the 1533 Clintonville Street rezoning. And this is a rendering of the proposed building for the site. The project area is located at the intersection of Clintonville and the Cross Island Parkway Service Road. The existing building is commercial and we're asking to map a C13 commercial overlay over the existing R31 residential zoning district. So just to show, the building now is obsolete and in great need of repair. So we're proposing a new one-story commercial building that will have entrance and all traffic will be entered and exited from the Cross Island Parkway Service Road. Sorry, everything is coming. And it'll be a 4,000 square foot, one-story building with 15-foot curb cut access on the Cross Island Parkway. There'll be adequate planting and buffering around the parking area. This is just the site plan quickly and the massing. And I'll just go back to this. So the community board voted to approve our application with conditions. And with those conditions, we are committing to limit the height of our building to one story, to limit the zoning floor area to 4,000 square feet, and limit all vehicular ingress and egress to the Cross Island Parkway Service Road and prohibit any 24-hour uses, which we're looking at a bank currently, so that wouldn't be a 24-hour use. But we're not looking at any 24-hour uses. And you have any questions?
Sorry, I didn't quite catch your name.
Jacqueline Scoranty from Acreman.
Thank you very much for your presentation. And thank you also for affirming that the conditions that the board had outlined have been met. We're glad to... We're always glad to hear that, but it's satisfied before it comes to the Borough President. Thank you very much. No speakers on tap and the item is now closed.
Thank you.
Calendar item number 1415 are related items. Rule number 190124CQ. Rule number 190125CRQ. The applicant, Acreman LLP. Community board number 14.
It's standing way down. That one. You're welcome.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Madam Deputy Borough President or meaning staff. I'm Richard Bassam with LLP. I'm representing the applicant. This is a rezoning for 4401 Northern Boulevard. The architect is Rawlings Architect. Our MIH administrator is Hannick, who's well-known in the community board. I'm not an attorney, but I am with Acreman LLP. We also have made an arrangement with 32BJ, so we're going to be a union building. This is the zoning map, which is hard to see from that distance, but you can follow along in the handout. It's currently an M11. We're proposing an R7X with a C24 overlay on Northern Boulevard. And the backside of the site will be an R6B, which is consistent with what you find on 34th Avenue today. As you can see from the land use map, the north side of Northern Boulevard is primarily residential. The south side is commercial. And as you can see, there is an M15 zoning district on the south side of Northern that permits a 6.5 FAR development with no height limit. I'm going to walk you around the site. It's a one-story auto dealership. Auto World is the applicant. There are 19 curb cuts on the site. As you can see, it looks like an auto dealership. This is our proposed building. We're proposing 335 residential units. Approximately 100 of them will be affordable. 36,000 square feet of ground floor retail. The applicant intends to come back as the retail user. He's in deep discussions with auto dealerships to take the space. We're asking for two actions. One's an amendment to the zoning map to create the R7X, C24, and the R6. And the second action is a text amendment to map the area as an MIH mandatory inclusionary zone district. On the left is the existing zoning. On the right is the proposed zoning. This is a tax map showing the proposed zoning designation. This is a very small print of what the zoning comparison table looks like. This is the MIH text amendment that will be included if approved. As you can see from the building on Northern Boulevard... Does this have a pointer? I'm going to use my finger instead. On Northern Boulevard, we have an eight-story base, which is consistent with the zoning. It steps back 10 feet and then we go to glass for the last two stories to allow the additional height to be lighter and airier. On the side street, we have a series of townhouses to match the properties across the street. The ground floor will be accessed by the ground floor residents, so there'll be life on the street. But the upper floors in the townhouses will be apartment-style housing. At the suggestion of the community board, we made the roof of the one-story parking garage green. By the way, we met with the community board four times at the committee level, three times prior to certification. This was one of the suggestions that occurred during the pre-certification discussions. Also during those discussions, our original proposal had the entire site mapped with the commercial overlay at the community board's request. We reduced it to 150 feet to accommodate this layout for the car dealership. Gives you some ideas of the elevations from Northern Boulevard and 45th. These are the standard MIH and AMI rents and levels. You've seen this all day. The community board had a concern about our breakdown of unit types. So we broke this down into what we proposed in terms of ones, twos, threes, and studios. We amended it at the request, though there was discussion at the community board, the resolution, which had approved our proposed rezoning to R7X, C24, R6B. The only condition they placed on it was that we should consider option one. We were considering option two at the request of the... At the... The district... Not the district manager, the council member, sorry. And we're open to option one. So if that's what the council member wants as we go through this public review process, we're fine with that. Though we provided this information, the community board did not take a position on the unit count. They asked us for census information. We provided that. They asked for sustainability. We will build the building with these 10 elements. Hannick, you all know. We're proud to be working with them. We partnered with them on a number of developments in community board one. And this is what the building will look like from across the street. I'm available if you have questions.
Mr. Bass, thank you very much for your presentation. Just to be clear, and well, first, thank you for... We do enjoy hearing or appreciate hearing that you met several times the committee levels of the community board. And so we appreciate that due diligence that you put in there. So did you say that since the board voted, and I understand it was not unanimous, since the board voted...
23 to 8.
23 to 8.
In favor.
In favor. So you are open to option one?
That is correct.
But the board... The board's conditional approval, was that option one be applied instead of?
Option.
I'm sorry. Where exactly... Do you think that the adjustments that you've made will satisfy the conditions that the board had outlined in their vote?
Well, the choice of the affordability option is up to the council member. So when we get to the city council and we're waiting to meet again with the council member we met with him earlier in the process, he directed us at that time to do option two. If he directs us to do option one, we're fine with option one. The economics is basically the same. Our job is to make the council member happy, so whatever option he chooses, we're happy with.
I believe we do have one speaker on tap, so if you'll just stand by, Mr. Bass.
Okay, thank you.
Jordan Weiss, speaking for the proposal... Or application.
Good afternoon, Deputy President... Borough President Lee, how are you? My name is Jordan Weiss and I work as a doorman on the Upper East Side of Manhattan and I've been a member of 32BJ for two years. I'm here today on behalf of my union to express my support for this project, this proposed development at 4401 Northern Boulevard. As you know, 32BJ is the largest property service unit in the country. We represent over 80,000 members across New York City. Members like me clean and maintain buildings like the one being discussed today. We are happy to report that the applicant for this project, Bruce Bendel, has made a credible commitment to paying the future building service workers at the site a prevailing wage. A prevailing wage job like mine allows working families in the city to live with dignity. We estimate that this project will generate six building service jobs and we believe that they will provide an important economic opportunity for members of the surrounding community. We urge you to approve this project and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss, for your time. We have one additional speaker and I will close the speaker's list after this. Mr. Bruce Jacobs, speaking against the application.
Bruce Jacobs, Coalition of Rockways. It's not that I'm against the project. I didn't like to answer what you gave. My mother lives right over there. You said that my job is to keep the councilman happy. If the community board voted with conditions and now you say that you're going against what the community board said and your job is to keep the councilman happy, now it is a total different story. You went in front of the community board with an offer, you put it out, and now, just in front of this community here, you changed that and said your job is to make your councilman happy. That's not the proposal that you made to the community board. I want to see the development, but to make the councilman happy is not what you came with. You came with what you went in front of the community board with. They came back with a mixed 28 to whatever. Why is it changed now? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs.
Normally, I believe in the less is more theory of life, but the last speaker obviously doesn't understand the public review process and how MIH is selected. We agree with the community board and we accept the recommendation to do option one, but it's not up to the community board or the developer to choose option one or two. It's up to the council member. And so we defer to the council member. I was being foolish... Funny on making the council member happy. I'm sorry, the speaker took offense, but obviously he doesn't understand the public review process.
The public review process does... The public review process does include...
Allow for any comments. I understand that.
No. The public review process includes input... A formal input from the community board and from the Borough President for a reason. But we hear you. And forgive me if you cover this, going back to the substance of...
Okay, please.
...of the application. Are there any specific...
ULC number C19. C19, 0422, CMQ. The applicant, Sheldon Mabel, PC, and Community Board number 6.
Good afternoon again, Deputy Borough President David Rosenberg, on behalf of Sheldon Mobile PC, representing Dr. T's Pediatrics. On a rezoning application for the block of 112th Street between 71st Road and, I believe it is, 72nd Avenue, from the existing R1-2A zoning to an R32 zoning, that would allow for the legalization of the existing pediatrics practice on the site. As far as density, this is a very modest rezoning, and as we've seen in another application that was recommended for approval by this office not too far from here in Forest Hills. In some of the lower-density single-family, in R1 and R2 districts, which are single-family residence districts, use group for ambulatory diagnostic doctors' offices are not allowed. And R32 districts are the districts that are mostly single-family housing districts, but also allow for essentially townhouses with multifamily bulk that also allow for doctors' offices to exist. So the block front that we're proposing to rezone has our client's site, which is the existing doctor's office, as well as one site that used to contain a doctor's office that now there is what appears to be a single-family home under construction, as well as two other pre-existing single-family homes that would be rezoned from R1-2A to R32. The underlying bulk for the single-family homes are the same. There's no increase in floor area, and no projected new development as part of this. And this would allow for the legalization of the pediatric practice. And just in the interest of time, I'm happy to take any questions.
Mr. Rosenberg, did you say no projected development at this time?
Yes.
And I...
So the actual increase in bulk between R1-2A and R32 is essentially nonexistent. It's the same 0.5 FAR for a single-family home, for residential uses, 1 FAR for a community facility. The only two major, the three major differences between R1-2A and R32 are A, uses, which is the purpose of this rezoning, that R1-2A does not allow for doctors' offices, R32 does. The other two are with respect to a certain height, which changes the measurements of actual height from 35 feet to sky exposure plane. On the whole, not a major change, or is that going to spur any kind of redevelopment? And the other one is yards, and we're dealing with existing houses, not likely to change either.
I understand it was a conditional approval by Board Six. Can you tell us what the conditions were?
The condition of the community board is, the community board asked us to reduce the size of the rezoning, as to take only the two northern most properties and not take the full block front as part of this rezoning. You know, as private applicants, our job is not just to bring forward what's good for our site, as opposed to say, BSA case, which we come in with our site, here's our problem, we need this fixed for our site. In a, for a rezoning application, our job is to essentially partner with the city to bring forward the best land use rationale that we can for the action while achieving the goals of our client. And we think over here that the most rational land use goal here is to take the entire block front. Looking around just across the street is an R71 district that has some pretty high-rise buildings, and the R32 district over here would actually, in addition to accomplishing the goal of allowing the legalization of our client's practice, but would also serve as a nice buffer zone between the higher-density development of the R7 and the very lower-density development of the R1-2A. And so that's why we are proposing the rezoning, the full block front.
So you are not accepting the recommendation?
No. I haven't done this that long, but we often see that community boards recommend bringing down the size of rezoning. And we understand that sometimes that happens through other actors in the process, through public review, but it's not something that we're proposing or something that we're contemplating proposing.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg, for your presentation. No speakers on this item, and so this item is now closed.
Alan Rider, number 18. ULC number 190442, CMQ. The applicant is Victor Petraro, BLLC, and Community Board number 1.
Thank you. Deputy Borough President Lee, Director Boy. As said, my name is Vincent Petraro. And I represent the owner here in the special permit application. With me is Diana Marone from Ownership, as well as Pat Smith from BJ's, and Alan Eichberg from Burlington. This is actually an item, I'm going to jump ahead. This is a special permit application filed under 74922, retail over 10,000 square feet in an M1 zone. We've actually been here twice before, back in 1999 and 2003. Both of those times, both the community board and Borough Presidents voted to approve it, as did the city council, though the council once had a modification. So we have now approvals from Claire Schulman and Helen Marshall, and now we'd like to have finished the trifecta and get Melinda Katz to also approve. I'll cut to the chase. Franz is with me from Jerry Talian, those offices are six. This is the site up here, that's the building. As you see, it's on the west side of 48th Street, south of mid-block, south of Northern Boulevard and north of 37th Avenue. That's the red outline is the site now. The reason we're here is that, you know, due to the quirk, I guess, of the zoning resolution, as I like to say, is that certain uses over 10,000 feet need a special permit, because back in 1961, they weren't considered to be, they weren't considered to be large uses. There was, you know, there was different kinds of uses. So Pergamon, and back in 1999, Pergamon and Toys R Us was on these two sites, Building One and Building Two. Pergamon was considered a hardware store, no special permit needed. Toys R Us, a toy store, no special permit needed. When National Wholesale Liquidators came in, considered a variety store, they needed a special permit. And we did get a special permit for what we call Building One. I'm going to jump ahead to the site plan. Building One is the lighter gray area.
Building One.
Right, and Building Two is further to the west. Now, Toys R Us has been out of there since last June, June of 2018, and National Wholesale Liquidators has gone since the fall of 18. So we already have a special permit for Building One. What this application does, it'll extend the special permit over the entire complex of Buildings One and Two, just for ease. We already actually have tenants, and the community board received them very well, prospective tenants. BJ's, who I said is here in Burlington. So BJ's will go into most of Building One and Burlington in Building Two. There's a couple of other uses there, Danus and David's Bridal, which are remaining. We also, since the last time we were here at the Borough President's office, the ownership purchased Lot 21, which is in the south side of the property. Let me go back to the tax map. It looks like a sliver there, but it's actually 15,000 square feet. The community actually brought up to us back in '03, if there's ever a chance to buy some property, please do. And the ownership did do that. And because of that 15,000 square feet, we were able to provide more parking than was provided back in 2003. So the parking's going up actually from 386, that was approved back in 2003, to 457. We're also adding 13 bike spaces, and also, the parking will be updated, so it's in total compliance with islands, shrubbery, trees throughout the parking. You're not going to be able to see it that closely, but you see the islands, I hope. So all of that is going to be done. Also, we were, before the community board, we went to the Land Use Committee twice, once before the application was filed, and then once during the ULC process, and then again, you know, then to the full board. The board approved this application 29 to 2, with one person not voting for cause. They did have two conditions, which the applicant agrees to. One of them was that personnel be provided to direct traffic to and from the site during peak hours and peak shopping seasons. No problem, that's going to be done. The second was that DOT do a study on traffic and pedestrian movements along Northern Boulevard corridor. And they explained because there's so much other development in the area that they want this done. We told them we'd be happy to join with them in asking DOT to do these further studies. I hope, and I'm sure the Borough President will join also. With me also is Alan Young from VHB, our environmental consultant, and he's checked, and he saw that DOT has actually started some pedestrian traffic work back in October. And they now, they did some workshops in the area, and they're going to continue that. So we hope to ask them to continue that and expand it to, you know, the full request that the community board has. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take any.
Mr. Petraro, did you say the DOT has started a study, or is looking into it?
Alan, want to explain to... By the way, and before Alan comes up, I just want to add that back in '03, the same kind of thing happened. We actually worked with the community board to ask DOT to put the traffic light that is now mid-block on 48th Street. So we were, you know, we're happy to do the same thing again and work with the community board, our resident.
I'm Alfred Young from VHB. So yes, 20, there's actually, if you Google "New York City DOT, Northern Boulevard" right now, they actually have a dedicated webpage to their efforts on Northern Boulevard. So when the information I got from there was that in 2018, October, they had, I believe, three workshops with the communities that Northern Boulevard runs to, so Astoria, Sunnyside, and Jackson Heights. So they were working with the community to get some feedback on Northern Boulevard, in particular focusing on Vision Zero. So if you look at the Vision Zero feedback map, there's a lot of issues, complaints from pedestrians and bicyclists about navigating through Northern Boulevard. So that is what is focused on, basically making it a safer corridor for all users.
So the Northern Boulevard, from Steinway to Broadway, that the board had conditioned in their approval, that's part of what the DOT is looking at?
Yes. I can't remember what the eastern boundary was, somewhere in Jackson Heights, but the western boundary, I believe they said they would start at Queens Park. So a very comprehensive view of Northern Boulevard, safety standard.
Okay. So we understand that the areas that the board is requesting is under consideration by DOT? Am I got it?
So in light of the community board's condition, would you be able to reach out to DOT just to find out what their focus of study would be in the area of your project?
Yeah, we'll do that. We'll reach out to them. We'll do it with the community board, so we don't, you know, make any missteps. If you'd like us to also...
So if you do it in a formal communication, like a letter?
Okay.
Copy of it, as well as the community board?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Petraro. And with no speakers on tap, the item is now closed.
Thank you very much.
Alan Rider, number 19. ULC number 190442, CMQ. The applicant, Strook, Strook, and Levon. And Community Board number 10.
We're going to set up, and I'll start.
Last but not least, thank you for your patience.
Is it still Thursday?
It's still Thursday. July 11, 2019.
July 11, okay. Well, we're, actually, we're real happy to be here, and no kidding, besides. First of all, Ross Moskowitz, first stroke, counsel to the applicant, and I'm joined by Evan Petracca from Triangle, as well as Alex Moskowitz and Alfred Young from VHB, and Brian Weinberger from Langin, in case there's any questions that come up. So Deputy VP Lee, Director Boy, that's great to be here. We're very excited about this project. We think it's one of the first self-storage special permits to come around. And Evan will walk you through momentarily, just as a reminder, this is a special permit pursuant to Section 74932. If you remember, was one of the most recent tax amendments that the city did for manufacturing districts. This came in at the end of 2017. And what we're going to show you is a development of a self-storage facility on a five-story facility in the cellar, the ground floor, portions of the cellar on the ground floor, and then all of the second, third, and fourth floors and the fifth floor. Just as a note, there is also a warehouse component to the project. There's multiple uses here. Warehouse is and has a right use, so we're just going to obviously focus in on the special permit and the self-storage facility. So with that, I think Evan, let's walk through it.
Thank you, Ross. Thank you, Deputy Borough President Lee and Director Boy, for having us here today. I'm Evan Petracca with Triangle Equities. Triangle Equities is a full-service real estate development company. We're Queens-based. We were founded three decades ago by my father, Lester Petracca, and since then, we've developed over one and a half million square feet of real estate in the New York City area, with almost 500,000 square feet of it being within the borough of Queens. And we're excited to be here today to do some more economic development, hopefully, within this borough, and bring some much-needed jobs and expansion of the air cargo space to Queens. So with that, I'll walk through the project. So on the board to the right is a depiction of the existing zoning map in the 1.4, I mean, 1/4 mile radius of the site. The site is located in M1-2 district, and the predominant uses in the area are airport service uses to the south and the east, with hotels, off-airport parking, and upper service industries that are serving the airport. To the north and the west are residential districts, predominantly located north of the Belt Parkway. So the site is pretty well removed from the majority of the residents in the area. I just want to point that out. The existing use of the site, as we bought it, was off-site airport parking, serving the JFK Airport. And on the easel to the left, you can see that operation. We have anywhere between 700 and 800 cars parking there on a daily basis, and authorized to have up to 1,000. And so there's a heavy amount of traffic that's existing there, you know, lower-quality jobs or not as high-quality jobs as what our facility is being proposed. And we forced off this site with a grander vision to deliver, what I'll show you in a minute, is a multi-story industrial facility and self-storage use. The vision on the right is the building that we're hoping to break ground on, you know, in the coming months. The first and the second floor of the property are used as industrial uses. The cellar is used for off-street parking for the employees of the industrial use, as well as self-storage space in the basement. And the third, fourth, and fifth floors, as Ross has described, are where the self-storage and the special permit that we're seeking are, will be housed. Our ground floor is approximately 55,000 square feet of air cargo space that will service, serve the JFK Airport, which is located nearly adjacent to the site, as well as 35,000 square feet of dedicated off-street loading and truck docking areas for the tenants of those buildings. We made a significant effort in kind of orienting the site this way, knowing the struggles that are going on in the area with trying to get trucks off the street. And after meeting with community boards 10, 12, and 13, as well as local civic associations and other community stakeholders, including Ms. Woman, we took all that into consideration and reorienting the site, and being really cognizant of trying to limit trucking impact in the site as great as we could. I just want to point out a couple things. There's four curb cuts off of, located off of South Conduit and 130th and 131st Street in order to get trucks off the conduit and off of those streets as quickly as possible. We have 15 truck docks on the first floor, which is, on the left, you can see that. On the second floor, which is another 13 truck docks, and I'll talk through the way that that building aspect will operate in a second, as well as to get those trucks as quickly off the street as possible and limit the impact of the local community in the area.[1794.43] That's the problem with not using technology, I guess. So here on the left side, to show you how the second floor is going to operate, we have a ramp to the second floor that can get W B sixty-sevens, or what you would know as large semi-trucks, up to the second floor, so that we can essentially have what would traditionally only be able to have access for ground-floor trucking. We're putting a significant amount of infrastructure investment into the site in order to get the trucks up to the second floor, so that we can deliver additional air cargo than, you know, would have been able to have been delivered in a more conventional site design. So the trucks are going to access the second floor via this ramp off of One Hundred and Thirty-first Street. They'll come up, and they'll have thirteen truck docks on the, on the second floor to access the sixty thousand square feet of industrial use on that site. The remainder of the building, which is why we're here today, is the self-storage uses. The self-storage uses are in the cellar on building, assuming on levels three, four, five, and they amass about a hundred and fifty thousand square feet of space. Those uses are really, we see as a community service, there's no self-storage within two miles of the property, but there is a heavy number of residents there. Additionally, they make this project financially feasible by using the air rights that otherwise would not have been able to be used for industrial space, since industrial tenants don't want to be on the third, fourth, and fifth floors. It makes us be able to pencil the project and deliver a hundred-plus jobs into the community, as well as deliver additional economic development to the JFK Airport. That's important, because as we all know, or many of us know, JFK is undergoing a bit of revitalization and kind of reorienting towards more space and, you know, a redevelopment of an older airport. And part of that vision is to increase the amount of air cargo capacity that is happening at JFK Airport. Both New York City's freight NYC plan, as well as the Port Authority study in conjunction with the Economic Development Corporation, have cited the need for additional private development of air cargo spaces in order to meet the needs and the ambitious goals that JFK has for air cargo. And we hope that our site will play a small part in it, but it would not be financially feasible without the use of the self-storage. And so because we're using the first and second floor uses to deliver economic development and job-delivering uses, and those third, fourth, and fifth floors make that possible, we're taking a site that otherwise would have been a, an off-site airport parking site and delivering significant economic development to the community. And truthfully, that's what we're most excited about in this project, that's what our company stands for, that's what our history is, and we really look forward to answering any questions that you might have about this project, and hopefully we'll be moving forward with it in the next several months.
Just want to, and take questions, just want to add two important points. One is, I mentioned that the tax amendment came in at the end of twenty seventeen. Triangle had already actually purchased the property, and so they actually had to pivot, because they had intentions of doing something different. Obviously, the new text required them to pivot. And in pivoting, they were able to go back out into the community, as Evan said, met with the Community Boards, civic associations, the local council member, PP's office, in fact, too, to try to get some input on how they could pivot and what could be innovative. And I say that only because I think it's also reflective, not only of the commitment by Triangle, but as importantly, is reflected in the thirty-seven nothing vote by the Community Board supporting this.
Thank you for that presentation. I'm sorry, Mr. Moskowitz?
Yes.
And then what was your name?
Evan Petraka.
Petraka? And thank you for what you do. The thirteen billion dollar overhaul underway at JFK is a substantial priority for this administration, and so your demonstration of, the demonstration of your commitment to pivoting and making sure that it meets some of the needs, and also your conversations with the Community Boards, several Community Boards, to figure out how to alleviate some of the trucking issues, I mean, that's very urgent to hear. Did you say, how many employees, did you say, a hundred?
We're anticipating approximately a hundred employees, yes.
And around what, or how soon, I should say?
So if we are able to execute our plan, we'd be breaking ground later this, or late summer, early fall. Our construction timeline would be, you know, within two years from that, we'd be delivering space and jobs to the community.
Okay, so around twenty twenty-one?
Yes.
Okay, so before the conclusion of the JFK overhaul. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions about the building itself. So the self-storage area is showing a setback. Is that a required setback, or is that designed and showing choice to be made?
I believe there's a setback above sixty feet, not being a architect or land use attorney. I can't speak entirely to that. But there's also the need for the setback. It's shown because of the floor plate of self-storage, that you'd like to be about a twenty to twenty-five thousand square foot floor plate on every floor. We're actually a little bit bigger, because that allows circulation from the elevators, as well as the, you know, the loading docks and where that is, so that people can get to their self-storage units as quickly as possible, so they don't have to walk a really long distance. Additionally, we had the setback on the, on the western side of the site in order to facilitate the ramp that we have that's going to the second floor, that the trucks up to that area.
And the parking for the self-storage, is this a twenty-four hour self-storage?
The self-storage will be open, I believe, nine AM to seven PM. We've yet to, you know, finalize that, because we haven't selected a flag. We were in communication with some of the larger, you know, self-storage flags in Q, Smart Extra Space Storage, and those of the world. But we do not anticipate a twenty-four hour self-storage. I'll pull back up the site plan, just to show how the self-storage operates separate and distinct from. It's basically self-contained, which is necessary for, you know, site security, so that, you know, folks can't be interacting with, you know, the employees of the industrial.
Sure. It would be a self park, and it would be isolated from the rest of the world.
Yes. So right here is where we have some self-storage parking stalls, there's about, you know, ten stalls in total, as well as a loading dock. So these are the two freight elevators that get us. This is all within the, will be operated as a partial condominium, self-storage, having their own condominium in the industrial, in its own condominium, but this will be part of the, now, self-storage.
So I would guess the access to the parking would be some gated, coded access?
Correct. I think that we're still finalizing how that parking will be accessed. We anticipate that because self-storage is a fairly low-impact use in terms of traffic and how many people are coming, once it's full, people go and they access their self-storage, you know, fairly, only irregularly, but infrequently. So we anticipate that the parking that we have designated for the self-storage will be sufficient for the operation of the self-storage area.
And have you begun conversations with air cargo operators?
Yes, we're currently in leasing discussions with several international and national tenants that are both either coming as new tenants to the area, or will be expanding their presence at JFK Airport. We don't have any tenants that have signed up as of yet. It seems that the industrial, different than retail, where folks are projecting out, it's more of an as-needed basis. So, you know, we're hopeful to have tenants in that soon.
Can you just clarify, which streets are the, is the entrance and the exits, Inbras, Gegras?
For, I'm sorry, Deputy President, for which use?
Each.
Each, sure. So. One Hundred and Thirty Street is where the self-storage will access. There's a curb cut, it's here, it's over here, a freight in the loading area, we located also off of One Hundred and Thirty Street, so it's going to be there. Employee parking will also be off of One Hundred and Thirty Street, so it will have cars that are accessing, they will be in the cellar off of One Hundred and Thirty here, whereas the trucks will access.
Can you bring the mic, we're recording for the.
Whereas the trucks will access off One Hundred and Thirty First Street and the conduit. So there's a curb cut off the conduit, there's another two curb cuts off One Hundred and Thirty First Street for this loading dock for the first floor. For the second floor, there's another curb cut to get to the second floor for the ramp. And so that'll all be off One Hundred and Thirty First Street. I think that that echoes the feedback that we received from the community to get the trucks off of this side of the street, where there's P S one twenty-four across the street, that was definitely, you know, a significant concern that we responded to, and keep more passenger car traffic over here with the truck traffic over here. I would also point out that we're working closely with DOT to get a two-way designation on One Hundred and Thirty First Street, which is currently one-way only. The Department of Sanitation operates a facility due south on the same block as our, as our building, and currently, all their trucks transit up into the residential neighborhood off One Hundred Thirty First Street, and which is right next to the school. So if we can get a two-way change, we anticipate a significant amount of that traffic will actually swing over to the other side and actually lessen the impact than what's currently happening near where the schoolchildren are outside playing and using their yard.
Great, thank you for that clarification. And the jobs, will that be local employment opportunities? I guess it depends on where the flagship is.
Yes, I think we'll, we work with our tenants and many of our other developments in order to require that they utilize, you know, work, local workforce hiring organizations, like Hire NYC, and that would be our vision here as well, at least to give some type of preferential hiring to the local community as part of our leasing. We've reached out to several different workforce hiring operators in the neighborhood, I'm blanking on, there's one that, I think it's the Council for Airport Operations, CAO. We've worked with them as well to try and, you know, we'll be publicizing our jobs in the local community.
That's very encouraging to hear. Next to me is Sharon Anderson, Borough President, CATS's Director for Economic Development, she works closely with the IVCs, and works closely with CAO as well, so that's very encouraging to hear. If you'll just stand by, we do have one speaker registered.
Thank you.
Mr. Bruce Jacobs, speaking in favor.
My name is Bruce Jacobs, Coalition in the Rockways. I'm in favor of the, except for one thing. I want guarantees with the traffic. You promised in that it's not going to input, you say the DOT is going to be working on, and there is a lot of trucks, and there is a lot of traffic that will be involved in this process. In the job process, you're dealing with, you say, organizations. What kind of organizations, and what kind of jobs? Are these jobs with pensions? Are these jobs career jobs? Or are these jobs just typical, regular jobs? I would like to know. In, you say you're dealing with, you know, it's nice that you're getting jobs, because I want jobs for my neighborhood. But with the traffic, I see a lot of traffic with the storage. The idea that he said from nine to six, that's a good idea, and you close it up, because if you have it all night, people be like Lloyd and reading all kind of other stuff. But I just wanted to thank you for your work, but try to clear up these things, because these things mean a lot. The traffic, the job issues, and like what's going, you know, what's going to happen. Because before they jump into it and then say yes, and then afterwards, we have a mess over there, it's a serious matter. Thank you very much.
Mr. Jacobs, with no further speakers, the item is now closed. And with no further items on the calendar, the next public hearing on land use will be on August first, twenty nineteen, ten thirty AM, here at Queens Borough Hall. Meeting is now adjourned.